Welcome to the Selectman's Meeting for Thursday, December 4th, 2014. Our agenda for tonight is approval of minutes, questions from the public regarding items not on the agenda. We're going to have Aquarian Water Company with their quarterly update. We're going to have a report from the Audit Committee and a presentation of the financial reports. We have a number of budget hearings. We have a large number of license renewals. We'll do appointments, Selectman Town Administrator Reports, and then we have an executive session for collective bargaining and real estate negotiations. So, why don't we get started? Because it is going to be a long meeting, so I'm going to try and hold everybody to the timeframes. We have approval of minutes. So how about if we do these one at a time? And I think I'll go backwards. November 6th. Has everybody seen the changes?
Yes.
Yes.
Anyone wish to make a motion?
I'll move that we approve the minutes of November 6th, 2014 as amended.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? October 30th. Have we -- do we have any changes there?
I will move that we vote to approve the minutes of October 30th, 2014 as amended.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? October 16th.
I'll move that we vote to accept the minutes of October 16th as amended.
So, I just -- I'm not sure if we have two versions?
Okay, there's two. The longer version is what we're looking at now.
Okay, I was looking at a different document in my folder. I apologize.
The first one we're going to vote on is the longer version with all of Paul's extended comments. Okay, there's no second. Let's go to the shorter version.
Well, have you seen what I've written, Paul?
I did, actually, Paul. But I was looking at it at some point, and without making a long discussion, I wasn't sure if it had been changed again, but what you put in, I think I was just pulling it out now. But I had looked at it earlier.
Well, what I did was, when I saw the edits, I reviewed the H-CAM meeting, and I felt in particular that it was very important to include Chief Duff's comments. He read from a prepared statement, and I thought that the initial minutes with respect to what he said didn't fully speak to it. So I simply took what he said and added it to the minutes. And then I also felt that Mr. Alexiades' explanation as to how the investigation of Roger Fernandez unfolded was important to have memorialized in some form, at least in terms of dates. So I added that as well. All of this is factual. It's not editorialized. It's the facts. You look at the film, and this is what it says. But this is the formal record, and I think it's important that the formal record include this part of the meeting. This isn't me editorializing. It's simply what occurred.
It's actually verbatim, and I think if people wanted this much detail, they could watch the film.
The same could be said about the written apology that you've included verbatim on page one of the minutes. So I'm asking you to second it because I think it's important for the historical record that these aspects of what occurred that night be included in the minutes.
Yeah, and I assume you're speaking to me, Paul, and I do understand. My preference would be, I'm sure everybody's preference in every board would be that we submit minutes, you know, not verbatim verbiage of what happened. And so my wish would be, and it didn't happen, but, you know, that we have an agreed-upon version. You know, obviously, I leave that as an opening, that it could still happen, but other than that, Paul, I probably won't be seconding it. But if you had issues that you had with the October 16th otherwise, I mean, that we could talk about through Town Administrator, you know, in the next week?
Let's hold those.
Well, I'm just saying is that my preference would be to have an agreed-upon version.
Mine too.
They're minutes. They're not, whatever happened on certain dates is over and done with. We've moved forward. I leave that as an option.
I'm not editorializing in what I want included in the minutes. I'm simply stating what was said. And it's a two-and-a-half-page series of minutes. It's not overly long. It's not unusual. It's not remarkable in what's included, but I think the substance, especially what Chief Duff said, is critically important.
If that's what's important, why not get the document right from the chief and put it as an attachment? Just as we've done with some of the other.
With what you said?
No, there's other things here that we always do as attachments, and many times I'll ask people who come in for the first five minutes to give us their statement, and we just attach it as an attachment.
Yeah, except that what you've said is stated in the minutes clearly.
Well, I think that was -- that was important.
And that was a statement, and I think that what --
But I think that was important.
I agree. But I also think that what Chief Duff said is equally important, and I think that that should be reflected in the minutes. And I also think that what Mr. Alexiades said with respect to what he did and when he did it is important as well. And I don't see why that wouldn't be included as part of the formal record. At least as the vote. I'm going to, if it's a two-to-one vote, so be it, but I'll ask that my objection be noted and that this draft be included as part of my objection to the vote that you choose to take.
Yes.
Well, I mean, I've given the option that you guys could, we could talk about it the next week. If that's not an option you want to follow, Paul, then I'm not going to second it, but I'm, again, just in the spirit of cooperation, if you had issues, I saw some of this stuff today, by the way, and I think maybe they were added today, maybe, but --
Yeah, they were.
I know, but so --
Kind of at the last minute.
No, so I'm not, I'm just, no, no, I'm just saying, Paul, that if you want to try to work out an agreed-upon version, we could wait another week. If you don't, that's okay, but I'm just trying to work with everybody here, because if everybody has concerns, it's something we normally could work out, but...
Short of that, I would not be seconding that version.
Do you want to hold it for a week?
I'm uneasy about negotiating what should go into the minutes. You know, procedurally, I understand if there's, you know, clerical errors or the like, but if we're negotiating about keeping substance in, keeping it out, that to me is unsettling because although the H-CAM exists and recorded everything that was said, because that's the only way that I could actually, you know, understand the accuracy of what I was being called upon to approve, this is the legal record, and I think that that should be included as part of this record.
Then we should have verbatim transcripts.
That, I don't think, is what the law requires with respect to the minutes. But when the chief, who was a 40-year employee of the town, got up, I think that took a lot of courage on his part to say something that was very hard to say, but yet he felt compelled to do that, and I respect him for that. And I don't want to reduce the importance of his words to a simple blurb in the minutes.
I don't think it was a simple blurb, so...
Well, and just to be clear, I just want to, where I'm coming from, is I'm not trying to avoid anything or eliminate anything or not address anything. It's a summary. And in all honesty, we could talk for half an hour about what we're going to do on this, or we could focus on things I think are much more important at this time, but I appreciate your comments, Paul, but it's a summary to me. And it's, we, I just don't, normally, we should be able to come to some agreement. That was my point, not to negotiate, but to come to some agreement like we do most of the time. But I'll leave it up to you. You know, that's, that's...
Well, if you're willing to talk about it, I'm certainly not going to discard that opportunity.
So we'll hold it for a week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Although I do think that my comments are heartfelt, and I do feel, I strongly believe that, so, I mean, I'll do so with you in that spirit.
With both of us.
Yeah, let me...
Paul, I'll communicate through both of you, through the Town Administrator.
Hope springs eternal.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. October 9th.
Again, I looked at the meeting of October 9th, and I took out the word perceived with respect to Mary O'Connor's comments.
And I put it back in.
I know you did.
Because that was her impression of what was done. There was no intent.
She did not use that word, and what she said was she was concerned about the lack of respect displayed to employees, Harry Sylvester, Roger Fernandez, and the people who spoke on their behalf.
And that was in her eyes.
It's your subjective assessment that that was a perception on her part.
And her subjective assessment.
Again, your insistence on inserting this word into the record, I think, distorts what was said that evening, and I object strongly. I'm not going to negotiate that under any circumstances.
Well, maybe I can end the discussion. I will make a motion to approve the minutes of October 9th as amended or as appearing before me.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
No.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I oppose, and I ask that the draft be entered into the record.
I did give Sharon a couple other documents that were in our folder, and I referenced one to add to the list.
I would object to any records that you're seeking to introduce now that weren't introduced on the night of the meeting.
There was one that was in our folders.
You did not introduce that into the record, nor did I see it, nor do I know what...
But it was in our folder. This is the list of what was in our folder.
No, no. That's not what was in our folder. Matthew McGyver's letter was not in our folder. The September 15th, 2014, letter that Ted Alexiades sent to Paul Healy was not in our folder.
I think that was introduced, though.
No, it was.
Okay.
Because Ted referenced it, and I gave it to Betty, and I asked that it be introduced into the record. So I would object strenuously to introducing any documents at this point that weren't referenced or identified on the meeting of October 2nd.
The original job posting dated 2004 was referenced, and...
With all due respect, you're trying to get a record into the minutes that I have not seen.
You did see it.
No, I did not see it, and it's not referenced here. These are the documents that were brought in on that particular evening.
Well, again, I will make a suggestion again, that if there's something that we can speak about by the next meeting, that there's, I mean, I don't know what the issues are. I'm not familiar with this scenario where there's a problem with records, but out of respect for Paul, I would certainly say if we need time to talk about it, I...
And my understanding it was, but we can hold that too. And I'll go back to the folder.
And I thank you for that, Paul, but you just reinforce what I'm saying. If you don't know about it, and I don't know about it, how the heck are we expected to...
It was in the folders, I'm almost sure. And if it wasn't, I'll stand corrected, and we'll go with this, so...
This is trying to rebake the cake.
No, it's not, Paul. It's trying to keep the record accurate. So we'll keep those two, and let's move on to Aquarian. If you all would, come on up. Welcome, and if you'll introduce yourselves. I think pretty much everybody knows you, but why don't you introduce yourselves again?
Okay. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for having us here this evening. I'm John Walsh, Vice President of Operations.
Sorry.
Do you want to introduce yourselves?
Yes. Ronique Goldstein for the Aquarian Water Company.
Jeff Farah for the Aquarian Water Company.
Welcome. And this is your quarterly update to us, which we thank you for coming, and I'll turn it over to John.
All right. Thank you very much, Chairman. As you had mentioned, this is our quarterly update, and we've got a couple slides here for presentation. So it's about a 10-minute presentation. I think probably best bet is run through the presentation and then do questions and answers afterwards.
Sounds good.
I'm going to start with the, do you want to run this? I'm going to start with the summer, the summer of 2014. We had a high-demand summer. This chart, what we're showing here, is the amount of water that we supplied from June 1st to September 30th. It's a million gallons for each of the last couple of years, so 2010 on the far left, all the way to 2014 on the far right. And you can see that 2014 stands out. We produced or supplied about 10% more water this year, this summer, in that timeframe, than in the average of the last four years. It's not surprising, given, the note on the bottom indicates what the rainfall looked like this summer. From the July 5th through September 15th, rainfall was 2.6 inches, which is about 27% of the normal. And June was dry, relatively dry, as well. So we had difficulty keeping up with demand early in the summer, and the limiting factor was our raw water system. And I've got a map shown up here of that raw water system. It's comprised of nine active wells and one reservoir, and they pump into, well, let me orientate you on the map here. In the center of this map, there's a black box. That is the filtration plant on Main Street, and there are wells that are north of that on Free Street and Felling Mill, at the Felling Mill site. And then south, starting near the town boundary, is Accord Pond, and then moving toward the plant, there are two, excuse me, three wells. So all those wells pump into a common piping system. So the limitation was in the wells and their pumping systems and the related piping systems. And we resolved the problem this summer by putting booster pumps at three of our well sites. We have invested in past years in that infrastructure in particular. In 2007, 2008, we installed four new wells to regain lost capacity in some of the older wells. Those wells are referred to as satellite wells. What that effectively means is they don't replace in total the existing wells. The existing wells stayed in place, they're still used, and the four new wells are supplemental. And we also did, from 2010 to 2014, 10 well redevelopments. Wells get dirty over time. The well screens, they clog up, so they produce less water, and those redevelopments serve to clean those well screens. We've had an engineer evaluating our raw water system, and in 2015, in early 2015, before next summer, we will be installing two, new larger pumps at two of the wells, new larger pumps at our reservoir. We have a pump station at the Accord Pond, and we're going to be replacing two of the three pumps there with larger pumps. We'll be reactivating an old well, our Felling Mill dug well, which is a large, about a 40-foot diameter, 20-foot-deep well. So it's an unusual well called the dug well. We're going to be reactivating that and its pump station. There's a pump station there that needs some work. And we're going to be doing, before the summer, seven well redevelopments. We've had an evaluation done of all of our wells, and some of them have declined in capacity a lot quicker than you would typically expect. This last one I highlight in red because I think it's one of the more important ones. It's reducing unaccounted-for water. So, going to the next slide. So unaccounted-for water is when, the water that is, leaves our facility, we measure the water that's leaving our facility through a flow meter, and we compare it to the water that goes through the 12,000 customer meters. The difference is called non-revenue water, and some of that water you can account for. Some of it we use at the plant, some of it the fire department uses through fire hydrants, so we can account for that water. The remainder is unaccounted-for water, and we are relatively high on unaccounted-for water in the system. As of the end of 2013, we're at, I believe, 22%. We measure it monthly, and we've come down, but not nearly as far as we want. So, in 2014, we've done a couple things to get on top of this issue. The first is we've done a water audit. The American Water Works Association has a standard for doing a water audit, which is identifying where water's being lost in your system. So in the spring, we did that. It guides you, the water audit guides you to where you need to solve problems in your system. Some of it's metering problems, and if your flow meters are off, you can think you have higher unaccounted-for water than you actually do. But a fair amount of it is related to leakage in the pipelines. So, we've done more leak survey, especially in the last several months, and in Hall, I think we're going to be doing our third leak survey this year in the next week or two. And I'll get into the next slide, what we found in the leak survey. But we've also brought our crew, our leak-detection crew from our Connecticut operation up. We have about 3,000 miles of pipe in Connecticut, so we've got folks who just leak detect all year-round, every workday. They are very proficient at it. I think when they came up here, within the first couple hours, they found a significant leak in the Hall system. Moving forward, we typically, we're doing two leak detections a year in the system. We're intending to do more, upwards of six leak detections each year. We fixed the leaks we found. I'll get into how many in a minute. We replaced customer meters. That's a matter of normal course of business. Customer meters tend to read low. All meters tend to read lower over time, which can lead you to believe that you are losing water. And we are starting and will continue doing some more main replacements in Hall on mains that are breaking in particular. In early 2015, we'll be implementing or installing acoustic loggers, which will help us find leaks. We're replacing some of our production meters. They're good meters, but our raw water has things like iron and manganese in it. It tends to coat the inside of meters and cause them to read inaccurately, so we're putting in meters that don't have that problem with that water quality. We're going to be evaluating large customer meters. Sometimes you'll say, I have a hotel that's got a large meter to handle the flows during the middle of the day, middle of the night, when there's only a handful of people maybe at any given time using water. There's such low flow that the meter doesn't register that flow. Again, it looks like lost water. We're going to implement a zoning program. We had one back in 2004, 2005 timeframe. We're re-implementing it. It's a way for us to determine and measure where in this system, in Hingham, Hall, and North Cohasset, may have the highest percentage of leaks. And then we're going to be, the data that we collect off our meters, for some of our meters, you can collect actually not just a read at the beginning and quarter at the end, but you can get, every day, you can get a read from that meter. And industry experience has shown that when we evaluate, utilities evaluate that data, they tend to find theft. People will bypass a meter for a week out of every month or things like that. In terms of the results of our leak detection, in the last several months, we found 21 leaks through our leak-detection effort. This table shows which town they were in and which type of infrastructure they were on. So there were three on pipelines, five on service lines, and some of this, we own the service line to the curb at each home. Customers own it from the curb into the home. And some of those leaks on services were on our side of the service, some of them were on customer sides. And then hydrants, there were 13. We don't own the hydrants. The towns own the hydrants, and there's some private hydrants. So we've been working very well, I think Jeff would attest to this, with both towns to get these hydrant leaks fixed very quickly. So all of these leaks are fixed, except for five hydrants. Two of those, I believe, are customers. Two of them are in Hall, and one of them is Hingham's, right?
Correct.
Okay.
They've been working with Chief Duff.
Okay. So that is, Chief Duff has been great on that issue. So when our guys find a leak, they make an estimate of how many gallons per minute it's leaking, and the total of those 21 leaks comes up to 2.24 million gallons a day, and that's about 7% of production. So that's a big number. So the leak-detection effort is working, which is why we're ramping it up and doing more of it.
That's amazing, in such a short time, to have found that much.
Yep, yep, and that's why we are doing more leak-detection, so... So, wanted to talk a little bit about capital improvements, and what I've got here is a summary of the last couple of years of improvements. First is water main replacements, and some of the important main replacements were on Union Street, LaZelle, and Free Street. I think we all recall that three or four years ago, there was, I believe, five main breaks in two years on Union Street and Free Street, and it left the customers, the residents in those areas, out of water five times for long periods of time. So that water main that was breaking is now out of service. There's new water main in there. And one thing that we learned from the process, we're always interested in hearing from the community and learning from the residents what they want from us, and what we learned on Union Street and other projects as well is that customers want to know more about the construction before we start construction. They want us to communicate more during the construction process. So one thing that, in particular, Ronique, has been doing is going through the neighborhoods, neighborhood walks before we start the construction, knocking on doors, letting people know what we're doing, and hearing their concerns, and also letting them know who they can contact if anything, if they see anything during the construction process that they're unhappy with. And I think that has worked very well. We did East Street in 2013 in coordination with a town paving project. Fairview and Leonard Streets are in 2012. Same thing, it was in coordination with a town paving project. We did Edgewater Road in Hall in 2013, and Prospect Street in Hall. We just finished that last week. That was a main that had a couple breaks on it, so we replaced it. One, a type of work that we do that people don't see because it's not in the street, it's not replacing water main, is the work we do on the treatment plant, which is really a key asset, absolutely a key asset in the system. So we have effectively replaced our existing SCADA system, which is our supervisory control and data acquisition system. It's the system that monitors and controls the facility. It was about a half-million-dollar project. We now have state-of-the-art hardware and software, all implemented by, we've, Aquarian has automated, using SCADA, all of our treatment plants. We've got 10 surface-water treatment plants. So all of that knowledge and all that automation effort that we've done in all of our other facilities was used here. So we have a very good system now in place at the plant. We replaced the roof at the treatment plant. Not a super exciting project, but those are the type of things you have to do.
Jeff is happy.
I'm very happy.
And the people that work there, I'm sure, are very happy.
Very happy.
A little warmer.
We replaced a polymer system at the treatment plant this year. It's one of our chemical feed systems that happens to be, well, they're all important, but the polymer system we have in place now has helped improve the reliability... but the polymer system we have in place now has helped improve the reliability, definitely, of our treatment process. In 2013, not 2103, but 2013, we rehabbed our centrifuges, which are how we handle our sludge at the facility. We, in 2013, we also rehabilitated our switchgear and our generator. The switchgear is the electrical gear that senses when the line power from the street goes out and switch it, turns on the generator and switches us over to generator power. We replaced some pumps in the facility and we also replaced some drives that run the pumps. This past year, we've spent, and we're still waiting for final numbers, but we've spent about $800,000 to $900,000 more on infrastructure in the Hingham Hall system than we had originally budgeted. Some of it was the roof replacement, the water main in Hall. We spent about $100,000 more on our pumping systems. So there was a need for investment and we decided to make that investment this year. In 2015, we planned to make the raw water system improvements that I discussed before, new pumps in particular. We're planning on replacing some more water mains in Hall. It's about 3,000 feet of water main that we plan to do next year in Hall. We're investing more in the unaccounted for water, some of it is in the acoustic logging and some of the money will go into our zoning program. Water treatment plant, we're always investing somewhere between $150,000 to $200,000 a year in the instrumentation, pumping and electrical systems in particular in the plant. And then we're also planning for the rehabilitation of our two tanks, the one Accord tank in the south side of town and Turkey Hill tank. Those two tanks, about a year ago, we had a company come in and inspect those tanks and they do a very comprehensive inspection. Both tanks, they assessed were in good sanitary and structural condition, but for both tanks, they recommended repainting, which involves sandblasting off the coating that's on the outside and inside of the tank and repainting those tanks.
And how long of a timeframe does that take, just so the public understands this is in a weekend operation?
It takes three to four months, I'd estimate, for tanks of that size. So when I say planning for those tank rehabs, those two tanks are not, they're in separate pressure zones, so they're not redundant tanks. So we have to do planning, because we're, the Turkey Hill tank, we want to paint that, we're going to take that out of service. That leaves a large portion of Hingham and Hall with no storage, no water storage. It'll be effectively a pumped system. So our pumps will have to continually modulate every second of every day to meet, match demand exactly, instead of our system floating off of a large 2 million gallon tank. So there's a fair amount of planning, we do this, we've got 50 or 60 tanks in the system, in the company. And at any given time, we're doing one of these tank projects. So we know that you've got to spend six months to a year ahead of doing one of these projects, getting all the systems in place to do, to take a tank out safely. One final thing before I hand it to Ronit to talk about community partnerships. We are expecting that there will be a rate decrease, starting January 1 for one year. We had petitioned the DPU to do this, and what it is, is we're passing back savings that we're getting because of change in the tax laws. We're passing back that savings to customers over the next year. And it's not finalized, the DPU is in the final stages of reviewing it.
That was a rate decrease, right?
Rate decrease.
I'm not sure if people heard that.
But I want to be fair, that's for one year. It'll be a credit on folks' bills of about 3.2% on the average bill.
That's a good thing.
It is, yes. So I'm going to hand it to Ronit to talk about community partnerships.
So, I get to do the fun stuff. So I'm going to start with something that's been consistent and then I'll explain what's in the pictures. We've had a seven-year run partnership with the North and South River Watershed Association's Greenscapes Program. And that is, it's a conservation program that teaches children at the fifth grade level. We actually had had South Elementary School into the plant, I think it was about 60 kids on the fifth grade level, and that was very exciting, especially for them. So we're continuing that partnership that's been going on for seven years. In addition, we've added and expanded the water conservation education to the second grade level through a partnership with Holly Hill Farm. And they talk about how soil can be treated to retain more water and then conserve more water. They actually have an Aquarian Water Watch, which isn't depicted here, but they're counting how many rain barrels they're using. These are through all of the gardens that are at the school, so it's pretty exciting. They're very excited. And it's going to be, what we're sponsoring actually is teaching hours with their staff and the students at the second grade level. And in the pictures is a partnership with Foster School, which is also connected to Holly Hill Farm. And as you can see, we didn't only sponsor, but we were there, there's pictures of us and a couple of those beautiful kids are mine. It was a lot of fun. It was a great partnership because there's parents there, there's the principal of the school, the vice principal of the school. And we had the opportunity to really kind of get, no pun intended, you know, in the dirt and help them, not just, you know, sponsor the program, but help them actually build the raised beds. And one of the parents actually designed this, the idea was that the kids would have it at their level. And then it also works with the Holly Hill Farm sponsorship that we're very excited about and hope to expand in the years to come. So, you know, the education through the kids, as I've said, I think in previous meetings, then the kids go home and they tell their parents and then the conservation message goes on and on and on. So, looking forward to it.
That's great. Thank you. Does Jeff get to say anything?
He's just the pretty face.
Now, you all hang, I do all the other stuff.
I want to thank you publicly for being right on top of all the water main breaks and getting information out to us. You must know where these things are going to happen, because your emails come out like almost immediately.
As we try to, I mean, direct work to us, customer service excellence, and that's what we try to do, is let the customers know as we're going gone. And, you know, with our leak survey programs going on, we find a leak, we try to get it fixed within 24 hours.
On the main breaks, this is, it's a good example of one of the things we've learned over time and that in the past, I think we would not be typically sending an email out to town officials when there was a main break.
Actually.
We're sending it by fax?
By fax, when I first started in 2008. I was like, really? We're sending a fax? And then we started to transition, can we actually email people? This is much more effective. And then who's on the email list? And that's, we're learning more and more every year and it seems to work, so.
And then using the code RED.
Yeah, more effectively.
To communicate with customers. But it used to be more of a, when you'd have a main break, folks would say, let's accumulate all the information first. Let's understand everything that's going on first, and it'd be an hour or an hour and a half before we communicate with the towns and with the customers. But what we've learned is that even though you don't have all the information, people still want that communication. I've had DPW directors say, I'd rather know that you know what's going on, because when a call comes in to me, if you haven't called me first or emailed me first, I'm left now with the ball in my hands to make a call to you to figure out what's going on. So they want to know, you know, as soon as we know, they want to know. So it's something that we've learned over time, just to communicate quickly and then as we learn more information, get that out to folks.
Excellent. Well, before I open it up to questions, one other area, if you would maybe give us a little bit of information on, where do you stand on the search for a new source? When we hit that magic number consistently or when we have significant new development that is definitely going to push us over the allowable water for a consistent period of time? Can you address that and then we'll open it up to questions?
Sure. I mean, given the high demand this summer, there is a point at which, as a utility, we should, it's wise to start looking for a new source supply. And we are at the beginning stages that, years ago, there was a desktop study done by an engineering firm, looking at potential locations in town for a well, but that's as far as it had gotten. And we've asked an engineering firm at this point to start the process of looking at alternatives, whether it's wells or interconnections with other communities. We're just at the beginning stages. One of the first steps in that process is to project or estimate what the demands will be for the next 20 years. You know, so that first step, we want to see what that projection looks like to understand how quickly we need to start moving through the process. It takes anywhere from four to five years to get a new well in service with exploration and permitting. The permitting is, takes a couple of years. An interconnect with a neighboring utility doesn't take quite as long on the exploration side of things, but the permitting can take long.
So you're looking at not only drilling, but perhaps wheeling and other things?
We're, I mean, it's the wise thing to do is look at all the options to start and figure out, you know, from a feasibility, permitting feasibility in particular, cost, availability of water. So we're just at the beginning stages of that.
Mr. Haley?
You know what, when do you anticipate beginning the painting of the tanks?
The Turkey Hill tank, we've got it scheduled for 2016. And Accord, we've got it scheduled for 2017.
Should we go ahead and put on the lights? Excuse me. And can you?
I'll take care of it.
Wake everybody up?
Is that going to be something that's done in the cooler weather, spring or fall?
We haven't picked the time yet, well, I should say, we're definitely not going to do it during a high-demand period. So the period from May 1 to probably mid-October, you know, we wouldn't paint the tank during that period of time. The ideal time is starting in like October, leading into the winter. I personally don't like the winter.
Do you have to completely cover the tank to paint it in that kind of weather?
I know Accord tank, you cover the tanks for two reasons. One is lead and nuisance dust getting onto neighboring properties. But you also cover them, most importantly, because if there's lead in the paint, you have to contain all of that paint that you're taking off the tank. Accord has lead in the paint, just can't remember if Turkey Hill does. So Accord would be completely shrouded.
Was that part of the rationale for doing all this replacement on the pumps and the treatment center? So that it could handle it when the tanks are out of service?
No, the pumps that pump into the system are, we'll call them high-service pumps at the treatment plant. So that's a separate pumping system, not the raw water systems.
My memory was that part of the reason that the reservoir wasn't being used is because the size of the pipes are a little on the small side during the peak season?
No, well, when you talk about a pumped system, it's really a combination of pump size, pipe size, and when you're talking about wells, when you're not like pumping from a tank, when you're talking about wells, it's well condition and capacity. All those factors come together. The solution that we're implementing this year to ensure that we can keep up with demands in future summers is not to replace mains, it's to put larger pumps in some of these facilities, including Accord Pond.
Will the existing pipes be able to handle that increased pressure?
Yeah, they will. Actually, it's not that high a pressure, at least on the south side of the system where we're going to be doing this work.
Are you able to quantify where the majority of the unaccounted for water loss is taking place?
That's part of what the zoning will help us do. We know that there's a fair amount, through the water audit, there's a fair amount that is leakage. Now, we may find out, we're going to redo the water audit every year, because as you collect more information, you input it into this, the water audit is built on a computer program and you input information into that program and it gives you a data back. For instance, you may find that your meters are less accurate than you thought. We put that information in and what it does, it tells you where the lost water is, the causes of it. In this case, given the data that we have right now, a fair amount of it is leaking in the distribution system, so pipes, hydrants and services.
Are you able to determine whether there's a sinkhole issue with any of this water loss that you've been describing?
In terms of a leak, a big leak that we don't see coming to the surface, is that? No, I think our guys, our leak detection guys, I would expect would be able to hear large leaks. I don't know, Jeff, if you want to add anything in there?
Sinkholes probably highly unlikely, because, you know, the surveys that we do would identify something that magnitude type of leak, that would have to be a very large leak.
Even in Hall where there's a lot of sand?
They've been able to identify them. In Hall where there's sand, or they call it beach shale, tends to go down in the ground and it doesn't usually sink. As a matter of fact, the one we found, the first leak that Connecticut crew found, was in beach shale. And it was running down into the ground, going into the ocean or the bay or what have you. And the ground never moved. It was, we were just picked up by the use of the sonic locators.
Thank you.
Mr. Gee?
Just briefly, thank you for coming, the presentation. And a couple of things, I know Paul mentioned it about the larger pumps. I remember that from your prior discussions with us and it was, I'm happy to hear, because I know there was probably some concern based on what I, the little I knew when you guys have educated me on how much water we could get and what the limitations were. So the larger pumps are a good thing and thank you for doing it and the time you've spent in the unaccounted for water and the work you're going to continue to do. I appreciate that, because that was also a big issue that people are concerned with. So thank you.
I'll open it for just a couple of questions from the audience, if we have any. None? Well, I want to thank all of you for coming and really thank you, the three of you, for making a real difference. So we can see like night and day. See you in the next quarter.
Good luck with budgets.
Thank you. Okay. For my favorite committees, Sue, do you want to bring the audit committee up? You know, I used to dread meeting with the auditors, now I look forward to it. And if you'd introduce yourselves and then introduce the other members of your committee that I see sitting in the room.
All right, happy to. Good evening, Paul, Irma, Paul, Ed Gillis, Chair of the Audit Committee. And you can see this is a high morale group, we have three of the five members.
That's awesome.
George Alakatos and Josh Gregory in the back row here. We also have two non-voting members in the form of Ted and Sue. And Mike Nelligan is the engagement partner from Powers &amp; Sullivan. And Powers &amp; Sullivan have been our auditors now since 2009. They're a regional firm with an expertise in municipalities. I'm here, as required annually by the committee's charter, to review with you a report for the year ended in June. The committee, again, as you're probably aware, is charged with the review of the audit process as well as the reports issued by the auditor. In this case, the financial statements, the CAPRA. And the financial statements here are the single audit, which is a report that you have that really relates in large part to giving the government comfort that there's internal controls and process around the federal granting authority. And then the management letter. Powers &amp; Sullivan's issued the report, it's a clean opinion, at least in layman's parlance. I think it's characterized as a unqualified opinion in their report. It follows, the report follows a standard form and includes certain required communications. They've identified no deficiencies in internal controls that are considered material weaknesses. They had no material disagreements with management. And they reported financials have been prepared in accordance with GAAP, generally accepted accounting principles. And I have been in accordance with GAAP, generally accepted accounting principles, and have been prepared fairly in all material respects. And those are standard required communications that the auditors are obliged to present to an audit committee and of a board of directors, or in this case, an audit committee reporting to the Board of Selectmen. The report itself, which looks like this, you should have a copy, is a form similar to prior years. There's an introductory section that Sue and Ted, author, provides a useful overview and some context. I think it's a good layman's characterization of what's to follow. There is the auditor's report, which follows that, or their opinion. The third section is characterized as a management's discussion and analysis. It's a required section of the report, and it starts to get a bit more technical, right? It starts to characterize the different basis of accounting that you see in the financial statements that are presented. That's followed by the basic financial statements themselves. In turn, there's a section on footnotes, which is very useful for the banks, credit agencies, financial experts. It's a little opaque, frankly, for the average citizen. And then there's two sections at the end that deal with supplementary schedules that, again, are required, and a statistical section that provides comparative data, generally over about a 10-year timeframe. That's also, I think, of interest to the citizens. It gives good perspective on trends. There's been some technical changes in the presentation. I would characterize them as relatively minor. There are government standards that are updated from time to time. These financials include the latest standard, which I think is number 65. And it re-characterizes some items that had been characterized as assets and some items that had been characterized as liabilities into what's called inflows and outflows. I think they are setting this up for what will be greater disclosure coming in future years around pensions in particular, but at the current time, it has little impact on the town's financials. The other report that's issued is the management letter. I would begin by saying, on balance, the comments are minor, and I think that they have the appropriate attention of Sue and her staff. There's one new comment this year that relates to monitoring old capital project funds. In the financial document itself, back in the supplementary schedules, you can see, I think on pages 94 and 95, it lists about 20 capital projects. And some of these are pretty long in the tooth, right? They're things that have been completed years ago, and there's still some account balances in those that need to get cleaned up. We're confident that's got Sue's attention and will be adequately addressed. The document also provides an update on comments from prior years, and those have been corrected, and Sue's done a nice job at following up and following through on those. We met five times over the course of the year, largely around the audit plan and the status of the audit, and then a couple of times specifically on the financial statements themselves. I guess the final thing I'd like to say is, once again, I think as you're probably aware, Sue and Ted and the financial staff, again, received a certificate of excellence for financial reporting for the last fiscal year. That's 2013. That's a long run. I've lost count of the number of years. So don't follow it up. And I'd like to, you know, we would like to congratulate, I think, Sue and her staff and Ted, and, you know, many town employees and elected officials and volunteers for what was a very good 2014. I think that one thing that comes across very clearly in the financials is the strong financial position of the town. So that's our report. Mike's here, and again, would be more than happy to address any specific questions you have on the financials, and I've got lots of help.
Excellent. Well, first, I want to thank all of you for another really fine job, and especially Sue, who multitasks to the nth degree during this period. But I also, I thoroughly enjoy going to your meetings, and you can't miss one because this committee goes through every single page of financials and every single number. Is that a fair statement?
Well...
And if you miss a meeting, when they're...
The hair was dark before we started. Is that what you tried to do?
Well, see, I solved my problem. We can take care of yours. But I've never, and this is my second year with you all, I really appreciate the thoroughness, and you actually make it fun, because I never thought an accounting group could be fun. But Powers &amp; Sullivan, I have to tell you, it's enjoyable, and the committee itself. Two things that I find remarkable about what we're doing now in the financials. First, Sue's analysis of fund balance and explaining it in a way that the average person can understand. Because even those of us that sat on advisory for my first couple of years, this was like an amorphous thing. It was just a huge, big number off in a corner that you couldn't touch, but it was there, and we had many names for it. But Sue's presentation of what is in that fund balance is really remarkable, and it really does bring it home as to what is kind of our savings account and what's hidden in, not hidden, but what is in there for safekeeping. So I can't thank you all enough. The section in the CAFR that gives us all kinds of information about the town, I really would like to encourage people to get the CAFR. You don't have to read everything, especially the footnotes. If you're not an accountant, your eyes roll back in your head, and you're right, they're obtuse. Is that the word?
Opague, sorry.
Opagues. But it lists the largest employers in town. It lists all kinds of interesting information that our Hingham Development and Industrial Commission uses, all of the different committees. But it's a feat for this team to put it together. So I can't thank you enough. But let me open it up to questions for Mr. Healy.
I don't have any questions other than to say thank you for your good work. And I noted with interest, the track record of the recognition goes back, what, 18, 19 years? Wasn't that when you were in there?
You got the first one.
Okay, you started it off, huh? Very good. Very good.
Mr. G.
Thank you.
And congratulations again to both of you. That's quite an accomplishment. We're very lucky in that respect. So this is the first time that I've met some of you and heard the report. So is there something that we can take from this report looking forward? I mean, I know you said we're in good financial shape, which is always something we like to hear. But I mean, from a layperson listening to what you had to say, is there something you could tell us about going forward? Any suggestions, or maybe that's not in your purview, but...
Well, I think that I'd start with the perspective that it's very well done. And in context, that means there's not a lot of errors that are being corrected in the process, right? So the books get closed, they get reviewed and audited. It happens in a timely fashion, and there's not a lot of arms and legs to correct it, right? And that's not the case everywhere. So that's the first thing I'd say. Secondly, I think the numbers themselves are very strong. I'm not a credit analyst or a banker, but I think that the folks that are, look at these financials and characterize them as, you know, top of the pile. I don't know whether it's in the top 5% or 10%, but it's, they're strong. The town's in strong financial condition. The things to worry about, I think, have the town's attention, right? I mean, the pension and OPEB liabilities are enormous. They're poorly accounted for by all municipalities, and they are, you know, going to be things that constantly need attention. But, you know, this town's in better shape than most, from what I understand, and has been more aggressive at dealing with the issue than most. And I think that the award speaks for itself. It says that it's presented clearly and, believe it or not, reasonably succinctly.
That's good.
I don't know if you want to add anything to it, or Sue?
I don't maybe give the board context about the comprehensive annual report and the award that comes with it that Sue is responsible for entirely now, pretty much. I think there's only a handful of communities. I know most of the larger entities in the state that do it, their auditors do it. So doing it internally, you know, there's, I know we started, we were the first community in the Commonwealth to do it. That wasn't the city of Boston, per se, or the Commonwealth. Now, there's a few more, but not that many more, quite honestly. A dozen?
About 23 in total.
Oh, really? Wow, it's really picked up. So you can see how far I'm removed from it as we move on.
About seven of those are the Commonwealth, the city of Boston, the city of Cambridge, and a bunch of quasi-government entities.
M.D.R.A.
Those kind of entities.
So it's still, then, about a dozen of the non...
Yes.
You know, there's 351 cities and towns, and we're in a group of about a dozen, so I think that's a good group to be in.
Sue, do you want to say anything?
The only thing I can say, it's been great working with the audit committee, Powers &amp; Sullivan, and we'll continue to produce the CAFR timely and every year.
And I think that's probably worth adding. The contract with Powers &amp; Sullivan is a three-year contract. It was from 2012 to 2014. We'll be looking at, you know, a new proposal from them in 2015. And I think as we had reviewed with the Board of Selectmen, as well as, I think, this actually required an amendment to the charter. At the end of nine years, we will go out for a RFP, in which we will invite bids from other firms. We don't do it, or would like not to do it, more frequently than that, as long as we're satisfied, because it's a costly process in terms of time, but most importantly, there's a learning curve for the new folks that create inefficiency and, frankly, potential ineffectiveness. And right now, we've got, I think, a pretty efficient and a pretty effective relationship.
Super. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you all.
For you to vote to accept.
Oh, sorry. Sue, first motion? Would you like to make that?
Sure. I'll move that we accept the financial statements and management letter as submitted.
Second?
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you.
Good. Thank you.
See you next year.
Okay.
Okay. Ted, I'll turn it over to you. Well, Sue doesn't go very far. The first budget is accounting.
Correct. All right. So you have your budget booked, and now we get into the fun stuff.
And we should tell everybody, we're going to hear the budgets tonight. We are not going to vote on any of them.
So what I was going to do is just give you a brief overview of where we are with the budget in total. As the budget book is presented to you, you have in the first section in Roman numerals a series of charts and my recommendations, the five-year forecast, the detail of the budget. I'll be working tonight from the town administrator recommendations to you, and then the individual budget sheets that appear in the back of the book. But I wanted to draw your attention first to Roman numeral, what was it, 14? It's a 14? 14, right? And that is the five-year forecast. The forecast group last met in October. We'll probably be meeting again in the early part of January. The only new data changes to the forecast from the last meeting with the group is the rolling in of the departmental requests. And you can see in this budget that all the department requests, as I'm recommending them at this point in time, put us $298,000, $295,000 in a deficit for fiscal '16. Obviously, we're early in the process, and we need to look at areas where we can reduce, areas where there's increased revenue or changes in the forecast as it comes up. And that's essentially the overview of the forecast. This does not include the school operating budget. Again, it's just a placeholder that has been there for all the other departments, too. My recommendations begin...
Can I ask you a quick question?
Sure.
On that deficit, is that somewhat normal and from this early in the process?
Correct. It's pretty consistent around this time. As a matter of fact, the positive surplus that we had on October was probably the rarity. Usually, we're in a deficit, and we work our way through that deficit until we get the town meeting. Usually, you know, usually by the beginning of March, we're reconciled. There'll be areas in the budget where we'll look to see some reduction in costs that we can reallocate into other areas. So you have my proposed recommendations, starting on page one, an overview of that, an overview of the revenues, and I take you through each of the individual aspects of government, the governmental categories being general government, public safety, et cetera. And then, starting on page... Let me frame my Roman numerals. Eight. I'm not very good with Roman numerals. It's one mental block I have for some reason. I read that as 5, 3, 3.
Is it Roman numeral eight or numeric? Okay. Thank you, Sue. Don't go too far, lady.
So here you see the town administrator recommendations, and the way they're laid out is, the first column is what we expended in fiscal '14. The second column is the revised current year fiscal '15 budget. Then you see the departmental request for 2016. The following column represents the fiscal 2016 additional requests that were asked by the department. Then you'll see my recommendation on the additional and my recommendation on the total budget. You'll see an increase and decrease year to year, and that compares my recommendations to the previous year budget, and then you see the percent increases. The budget is designed to draw your attention at the additional requests, essentially, because that's really what's new in the budget from year to year. So you don't have to continually revisit things that, year after year, you've agreed that that's the area you want to spend, although you're able currently to weigh into any budget area. Overall, there were $743,972 worth of additional requests. This budget that I'm recommending to you includes $345,265 of those. For a total operating budget, again, I'm using a placeholder for the schools, so we need to consider that, is $96,51,059, a 2.44% increase over the prior fiscal year.
Is that what gives us the deficit of the $300,000 or the $298,000 that's shown on the forecast?
I don't know if I...
The forecast where it looks like we're going to be $298,000 short, does that take into account?
All of the town administrator budget requests.
Okay, not what the department's asking for.
So if I had just simply put in the department requests, the deficit would be, you know, $4,000 more in the 700 range. So your first budget tonight is...
Reserve.
Can you do the accounting budget first? Okay. The accounting budget appears. In the front of each section, you'll see a table of contents. So the town accountant's budget is on page six. Similar to the town administrator recommendations, they're laid out. You'll see these budget books come from our computer accounting system. We have fiscal 2013 actual expended, '14 actual expended, current year budget revised for any transfers that may have been approved. And then the 2016 request, you'll see the additional on the outside. And actually, what I do is just introduce you the numbers, and then give you guys an opportunity to talk to the department head. And so the first budget for Sue, the town accountant requested $643,691. It was one of the easier budgets I had to work with. There was no additional requests, and I've recommended the entire budget. It represents a $10,191 decrease over the prior fiscal year, a 1.56% decrease. Sue, you want to give any highlights on your budget?
Can I ask this question? The 1.56 decrease?
Decrease.
And that's always good news. I'm just, is that, is there a reason why it's decreased?
The salaries decreased due to staff turnover, and the expenses were level-funded, and IT expenses, the service, computer service agreements went up, but the website consultants went down. So we have a $10,000 decrease. Is your, the computer service agreements, is that just because the normal growth, which like I'm used to, only thank God yours is smaller numbers than what I was dealing with? Yes. Any new software, or this is just same old, same old? There is going to be some permitting software.
I thought Steve built into the budget some allowance for the permitting software.
Yes, yes.
Now, the permitting software is probably the worst area of the accounting budget, because, you know, we get, you know, on the, for example, on our computer, on our financial software, six or seven years ago, we got a 25% increase in the support agreement. And our choices was, were this: pay the 25% increase, or go buy a new quarter of a million-dollar package and implement it. And they, you know, the companies have you over the barrel to some extent.
I think the biggest increase, Irma, is the new telephone system. Okay. That would make, good point. That would make some sense. But your administrative support services, when that went up to 8,000, is that also the phone system in there? You went from 2,914 to 8,000, and you're keeping that. I just don't remember what's in there from my old days. You went to 8,000?
Well, that's actually the same budget. Those are the actuals, what we spent on it.
No, I understand. But the big jump that went from 14 to 15, do you remember what caused that? We uncovered it. We didn't get the, all the invoices in. Thank you. You're welcome.
Paul?
Thank you for your good work.
You're welcome.
That's it? Okay. I didn't know if that was the start of a whole series of questions.
You're going to start asking a whole series of questions?
Be my guest. Sue can answer every one of them. Paul, do you have anything?
No, I, again, I thank you, but I, I'm sure I'll have additional questions, but I'll sit for now.
You do a great job on the budget.
So your next budget is the reserve fund. This is a fairly straightforward budget. This is the advisory committee's annual reserve fund, so that if we have budget issues throughout the year, we don't have to call a town meeting. It appears, it is recommended at $550,000, as it was last year, and it appears on page five. In your budget book. And the, what we try to do is, we've tried to keep this close to 1% of the operating budget, net operating budget, and it's a struggle to keep it at that high level. You know, I debated increasing it this year, because we've had some pressure on the reserve fund in the last few years, but as you can see with the deficit, I don't think we're going to be in a position to do that.
Just occurred to me, we should thank you for your work with Shrek. Oh, you're welcome. They're great people to work with. Because I don't, I don't think people understand how much time you put into keeping the books in order and keeping the money flowing to and fro. So thank you. I just looked at the compensation worksheet, and it just dawned on me. So thank you very much.
So what the chairman's referring to is that the regional dispatch center, the four towns, they needed some, one of the towns or a private company to do the accounting and bookwork. And the four towns decided to contract with the accounting department in Hingham to handle all of their accounting work.
I just had a question. So Ted, I know we've talked about before in terms of the reserve fund, maybe just if you could tell folks what we use it for?
Sure. The reserve fund is designed for extraordinary and/or unanticipated expenditures that may come up throughout the fiscal year, so that a community does not need to go back to town meeting to ask for an additional appropriation. And Mass General Law allows towns to create one and charges the advisory committee or the finance committee, depending upon the name of the town, to manage that fund and to make such votes for it. We've modified our procedures a little bit here in town in cooperation with the advisory committee. Reserve fund transfers come here first, and the executive body, the Board of Selectmen, approve them, and then they go to the advisory committee for approval. That's at the graciousness of the advisory committee, because technically, the advisory committee, it's their fund, and they could, you know, prove right directly out of that. Historically, we don't spend a lot out of this fund until the tail end of the year. Generally, the message is, we ask departments, if they have an emergency, to bring it up to our attention. Board of Selectmen will look at it, advisory will look at it, and frequently, what we will do is ask the department head to try to work it out through the budget, but at least we have notice of it, so we can sort of put a placeholder as we might need a transfer.
Again, I know, I know we've talked about it ourselves, but in terms of the money, usually it says at the end of the year. Is there anything that last few years that you, that we've used it for, an example for people?
Snow and ice.
That's predominantly, I mean...
That's what, that's what takes the bulk of it.
The last, I would say, the last 10 years, we've probably closed the balance of this to cover the deficit in snow and ice.
And then overtime, overtime, actually, and police and fire, a lot of times, overtime, depending on the people losses they have.
To give you some examples of last, last few years, you know, the advisory committee approved 45, $40,000 or $45,000 for us to hire an engineer to jump into the FEMA flood plane map issue for community, folks along the, well, the areas along the waterfront. Things that we haven't budgeted for, that come to us suddenly. I mean, we're a $100 million organization, so occasionally, things are going to happen that we haven't anticipated, and that's what that fund is for.
Point for a second, is that is still ongoing, the FEMA?
Yes. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So I will point out, and I conclude it in my budget messages for the advisory committee, they've asked me over and over again to communicate this to the departments, and I think by and large, departments have gotten the message. The reserve fund is not there as a pool of funds to just come to at the end of the year to further your, the department needs. It's really extraordinary unforeseen, and they've asked departments to consider it in that fashion, so. All right. There are all the questions. The next budget is the group insurance, and that'll be further in the back of the book. Group insurance will be under the Employee Benefits section, and it'll be on page 162.
Do we have any numbers from Mayflower yet?
We do not. So the Mayflower Group, and as you know, I sit on that board, the Mayflower Group will be giving you, hopefully, giving numbers out in the end of January, early part of February. We're targeting that. As you can recall, I think maybe, Irma, from your advisory days, they used to give us those numbers in April and May. And, you know, we really worked with the county, which used to run the healthcare program and switched it to Mayflower, to understand our business, and they did, and they started accelerating their review process, so that, you know, right now, December, January, we're going through reviewing the rates and getting ready for a rate recommendation for next year. The budget includes a 10% amount that is an increase year over year. We adjusted it downward to account for actuals this year.
And which number is that, the 6.8 million?
Yeah, correct. And so, it's effectively an 8.16% increase year over year. In the forecast, we've balanced budgeting 10% over the previous budget amount. We cannot calculate in any way of certainty what the healthcare budget will be for the year until all of the teachers come back in September and are fully enrolled in the program, because they represent a large chunk of our base. And that's when they sometimes make decisions not to accept or, or to accept the town's healthcare. So that's usually in October, we can start to, when we get the bills for the end of October, beginning of November, we can start to see, all right, now we know how many people we have, and we can sort of project out what we think we're going to have for the year, and so we've, we've made those adjustments. We've received 0% increases on our healthcare the last three years. We are trending close to that this year, but it's a little early still. And so, you know, this is the year, this is the area that we've used to balance our budget in the last few years. As you can see, there's a half a million dollar increase in here. We're a $300,000 deficit. So, you know, if healthcare comes in where it's been in the past, our budget will be in very good shape.
Now, is Mayflower, just from your experience there, is Mayflower going to reach into its reserve fund again to give us another zero year in increase, or what do you, what do you see?
So each, in each of the last three years, they have allocated a portion of their fund balance to lower the rate that the, that the raider, the healthcare carriers have recommended the, the system have. And in each of those years, they haven't used that allocation. The fund balance instead grew larger and larger, which meant they, they had enough rates without, without needing that subsidy. And I suspect this year, they'll have some type of subsidy again to begin the rate process, and then, of course, you'll have to wait to see how, whether they'll need it throughout the year. I think most of us are starting to get a sense that healthcare inflation is probably not going to continue on as flat as it's been the last few years, and it's probably going to start trending up. But, you know, we don't know that for sure.
Ted, just so people know, you said you're waiting for the numbers to come in from the Mayflower Group. Can you just tell the folks at home or the audience how that, how that, how that affects us, what they, how they interact with us?
So the Mayflower Healthcare Group, which used to be the Plymouth County Healthcare Group, provides healthcare to 38 municipal entities within the South Shore area. We're one of them. We're actually the largest member, and we've been a member since, around 2001 or 2002?
Since I've been here.
And so we're, we take our subscriber base, and we add it to a much bigger pool. They renamed themselves from the Plymouth County Healthcare to the Mayflower Healthcare Group about seven or eight years ago. Enormously successful program. You know, it allows us to be part of a bigger pool. The reason we joined them was that we went through a period in the early 2009, 2000 period, I think Betty, you were working on healthcare at that point in time, if I recall. We had three years in a row where we had above 20% increases, 22, 24, and 26 in a row, three years, and it was, as you can imagine, looking at budgets, 20% increases. It drained our fund balance completely. We had a very strong fund balance, and in three years, it was gone. So, you know, healthcare can move pretty quickly in, in bad directions. You've got to be very, very diligent and maintain your reserves. So the, the Mayflower Healthcare Group has done a great job of focusing on that and gives us an opportunity to be part of a bigger group.
Paul?
No, no questions. Thank you, Ted. Want to add anything?
Nope. Okay. Our next one is workers' comp, and that is on group insurance, workers' comp. And that is on page 164.
Want to take us through this, Sue? Managing this budget.
For workers' comp, I'm requesting $300,000, which is a $50,000 increase. Last year or two, we've had some very substantial injuries. The trust fund has taken a very large hit, so we have to build up the fund balance again. So I'm asking for a $300,000 reserve, request for the next year. Do you want to explain to people that I don't think most people understand we're, we're funded internally for workers' comp? Workers' comp is self-insured. What we do is, we have a trust fund. We transfer the money into the trust fund. Some years, we do great, some years, we do not. We have, 2014, we had a, 2013, we had a very fun, a very healthy fund balance. The last year or year and a half, we have had several major injuries on the town and school side, and it has drained our fund balance. Right underneath the department request is the balance sheet for the workers' comp, and at the end of last year, we had a $720 deficit.
So if I can give you some history here, right before I came to work for the town in 94, the town had gone through a process where it had been self, had been contracting out all of its workers' comp, buying an insurance policy like most private companies do. And a group of folks in town, Insurance Advisory Committee, got together and recommended to the town that they self-insure the product. They realized about $200,000 savings the first year they did that, and every year subsequent to that. And we've been working in that mode ever since. In the late 90s, when I held Sue's position, I recommended to the town, consider minimizing some of the risk with the self-insurance part of that program. We have a, we have a requirement under state law for our police and firefighters, commonly known as Section 111F benefits, to pay 100% of their, their compensation if they get injured on the job, and to pay all their medical bills if they get injured on the job. Further, police and fire have heart and lung presumption laws that say if they, you know, get lung cancer or they have a heart attack, it's presumed to be on the job, and so we're responsible for those, too. And I think it was in 99, I believe, that we were approached by the Providence Insurance Company. Goddard Insurance was their representative. They offered us a policy to cover that. I thought it was incredibly cheap for what they were offering, and I was correct. We paid about $40,000, I think, in the first year, and realized about $70,000 in claims. They subsequently raised our premiums next year to $75,000. I knew they were going to do that, but it was still $30,000 in year one, so why not? And subsequently, we've been able to go back, I think, more to the model rather than the gain, and usually, you don't have too many gains on insurance companies, that we've offloaded that risk. You know, medically, a heart attack is a six-figure medical event, and we'd be on the hook, dollar for dollar for that, plus the lost wages, and now we get reimbursed for some of those lost wages. So it's been a very successful program. The insurance products moved around a few years, but that's, just to tell people, we have a, we don't just completely self-insure. We have one portion of it where we've bought an insurance product because it works well for us. And by the way, the workers' comp, along with the property, which we're going to get to in a little bit, I think, all of which is going out to bid, we're in our cycle to do that next year.
And also, all the ones we're talking about here are both town and school side?
Correct. Correct.
Paul?
Sue, with respect to the exposure on these comp injuries, are these individuals out permanently, or is there an expected date of return, or?
One...
We can't talk about specific cases.
It's all over, it's all over the place.
Well, is, I guess the reason for the question is, is the town explored whether or not it makes sense to have like a high deductible and purchase some kind of policy that protects us in case of a catastrophic exposure?
We've looked at that in the past. What we found is that the cost of stop-loss insurance is, A, too high, and B, we've had difficulty collecting on our claims when we've placed stop-loss insurances, especially in this area. So it's something that I think Sue will discuss with the Insurance Advisory Group that she'll meet with when she talks about the bid process for the next range. Well, one of the things we do, though, is we have, you know, our biggest exposure is getting our employees back to work when they're, when they're injured. I think Betty can relate to this, because that's another area she was working in when I first got here, and cleaning it up, doing a good job of cleaning up. If you, when a worker is injured, you need to make constant communication, have the caseworkers with their, with them, and walk, work them back to employment. If you detach and just allow them to work through the healthcare system independently, a large percentage of those employees don't come back to work. And that was our experience. That's why we had some large legacy claims back in the early 90s that we don't have anymore. So when someone goes out, these benefits are there for them, they deserve them, and we, we're proud to give them to them, but we make sure that they're, that they're duly needed, and they're expected to go to their doctor's appointments, and we're going to do everything we can to get them back to work as soon as possible. And that message is clear, so it's, we don't feel we have any issues that people are abusing the system. We're just, we've had four, five years of good luck, and now we're having two or three years, or two years of a little more injuries.
Unemployment?
Unemployment. Unemployment, I am asking just to level fund at 30,000. We will have, I'm hoping we will have a little bit of a reserve this year. Our unemployment rates have actually come down a bit, so I am, I'm not asking for any more.
So I would give you two things on this. One, I would like to publicly acknowledge David Basler's great work, our Human Resources Director, and really, being at the state level, getting the state's attention, along with other managers and HR directors, to focus on changing some of the laws that were allowing people, that we... people, that we felt, to collect unfairly, to collect in situations where they weren't really out of work. And there were some loopholes in that system that were very well broadcast in the papers, and David was working that for us on our side, and I think he deserves credit for that. The other thing is, it's an oddity. We have unemployment expense in a period where we are not reducing our labor force or laying people off. And frequently, people ask me why. And the answer is, you know, there are times where we have separations with employees, and it's in our interests not to, A, dispute their unemployment claim because we want to end that relationship amicably. And in a lot of these cases, sometimes there are school department employees that are getting close to tenure, and the department feels that that's not going to work out. And again, you know, you certainly wouldn't want to lock in a teacher for a lifetime if you're not feeling comfortable in that regard. So, these things happen. $34,000 in '13, $40,000 in '15 on a million-dollar budget, I think, is a pretty good experience. But we are self-insured for workers' comp, sorry, for unemployment compensation as per state law. We do not pay a percentage of payroll. If we did, we'd be paying, you know, hundreds of thousands more. And we pay dollar for dollar for every benefit that goes out the door.
Okay. Questions? This one's easy. Okay, next.
All right. Your next budget is contributory retirement. It is...
163.
Thank you, Betty.
Okay. The contributory requirement is $3,839,17. It is straight from our actual evaluation report.
So, we are in a funding schedule that will fully fund the pension system in 2023. I believe the retirement board, if you have more questions, I can answer some of them for you as chairman of the retirement board. But you, the retirement board wants to come in front of you to talk about a warrant article that they're going to be proposing to increase the cost of living adjustment base from $12,000 to $13,000. And that is an article that is required to be voted by the retirement board and forwarded to the town for discussion. And I know the board wants to come in, and I think it's a good idea to hear from the board about the performance of the last calendar year in the pension system.
That would be good.
So, I think sometime in early January would be a great time to see that.
They do a nice job of giving us the package with the analysis, as I recall. That would be fun. Okay. Good old Medicare.
Medicare's on 167. Okay. Got this one. Okay. Medicare, we're requesting $675,000. In the forecast, we usually have a 10% increase, but I am, we're seeing a trend that we don't need the 10%, so we're going to go down to 675 and...
Any idea why it's going down?
You can take it.
No, I can't.
In 1986, the Tax Reform Act of, the Tax Reform Act of 1986 required Massachusetts government employers to withhold Medicare tax from employees at a rate of 1.45%. Municipal employees in Massachusetts are not subject to social security taxes, so they don't get the 6.2%. They also are not eligible for significant social security benefits unless they had worked outside prior, or any benefits. And so, as I've said to you over the years, we're on a trend to eventually get to 1.45% of our total payroll expense because eventually, every employee we have will have been hired after January 1 of 1986. You know, we don't have too many left prior to 1986, so that's the direction. So, we're seeing a leveling off, which is what we should expect at some point in time.
Paul?
No.
Okay. Insurance?
General insurance is on page 169. I was requesting $575,000.
I've reduced that number by $25,000 because we're going to go out to bid, and, you know, we're going to challenge those insurance companies, give us better prices. You know, Sue made the case to me to increase it, you know, $50,000 or $75,000. I can't tell you until I see what those bids are going to look like. It is going to go up. There's no doubt about it. It's going to go up simply because our insurance premiums are based upon the value of our buildings and our assets, mostly our buildings. And, you know, we just built a new school, $60 million school, so that's going to increase our asset base, and it's going to increase our premium. And we've had a couple of accidents that, you know, that's how it works, right? You know, you pay your insurance bill, you get in an accident, your insurance goes up.
Does this include Lincoln School Apartments as well, or?
No, it does not. They pay their own.
Okay, that's on their own?
Yes.
Which, thank you for helping get insurance for that, even though that's an anomaly because that entire line of business is getting very expensive to insure. And a lot of insurers, correct me if I'm wrong, but you teach well, are no longer insuring entities like Lincoln School Apartments.
That is true.
Okay. And your last budget is on page 162, and it's just below your healthcare budget, and it's your other post-employment benefits or your OPEB budget. And you can see a decrease here, pretty substantial, from $1,090,000 to $880,000. We had a new funding schedule last year, and this is a product of good investment performance of the assets and changes in plan design that we have implemented over the last few years that have reduced our long-term liabilities.
I'm happy with this. I probably know more about this than anything, so Paul, do you?
Good work, Ted.
Thank you.
We started funding this?
2009.
Yep, when I was Chair of Advisory. That was when nobody else was doing it, I think Newton and a couple other people.
We were actually one of the first communities to put some, that year, I think, we put $300,000 in. And that was quite an argument, if you recall. Now, we're at a million, and so...
Because the bottom fell out of the world. John's back there going, yeah, we were like holding each other up, saying, we got to do it, we got to do it.
I will tell you now that the rating agencies have started asking in each of their reviews now where we are with our OPEB and our pension funding. So, as I told you when we were in the OPEB discussions four or five years ago, the only thing preventing the rating agencies from lowering credits because communities were not facing OPEB was the 2009 crisis, and they realistically knew that no one was going to be able to do that. So, they, I think they just begged off of it, but they're asking now regularly, so...
And it's now showing up as a liability?
Yes.
Because is it a footnote, or is it a real liability now? It's still a footnote?
It's still a footnote.
No, no.
No, it is on the...
Oh, it is? Okay. So, thank you. Any questions?
I'm done.
Nope. Questions on OPEB? Thank you, Sue.
I'm done.
Another awesome job.
Your next budget is elder services. I see...
Another good one.
Barbara Farnsworth in the audience. This budget appears on page 95.
Roman or regular?
That's regular 95. I kind of practice my Roman numerals.
I don't think I could decipher a Roman numeral.
Ah. So, the elder services budget, again, you know, Barbara made my life very easy, as she regularly does. $284,891 request. I've recommended the entire amount. They didn't ask for any additional requests. It represents a $346 or a .12% increase year over year, about as flat as we can get. You want to add anything?
No, I think we, one of the things that we've been doing is our long-range plan, revising that, which hopefully will be done shortly this spring. And I think within that plan, a couple of things that we're going to be looking at overall is staffing. So, I just want to alert the Board of Sluckman to that and Ted, and how we're staffed and how we really should be staffed. So, in next year, the year after, we may be coming in with requests to better meet our staffing needs based on growth and also based on more of the complexities of what it takes to operate the department.
Because your general public is growing by leaps and bounds.
General public. And, you know, the kinds of questions that are coming in just through general reception and that are now getting much, much more complex. We're finding a need that there needs to be a lot more consistency in how those questions are answered at the first go-through, you know, at front desk, a lot of those things, so...
Do you want to talk about your revolving fund a little bit?
Yeah. The revolving fund is actually money that we collect from program fees. Many of our programs now are fee-based, all the fitness classes, all the lifelong learning classes, any of the trips that we do, some of the other special classes, like when there's bridge lessons, those kinds of things. A lot of it's volunteer labor, but we still charge a fee for the classes. So, they go into the revolving fund to pay the instructors where there are fee-based instructors, to cover our other expenses such as water, some of the Keurig coffee expenses that aren't totally met with fee, and general replacement of, let's say, weights, fitness equipment, those kinds of things.
Do you have any statistics on the numbers of people that use the senior center? I think that would be really interesting, perhaps when you go to advisory, but then, if we could have it too, the growth over the years, because you really are bursting at the seams.
I think what's happened is that we're bursting at the seams because there's more programs. I went through today, and I always like to back out the sort of institutional settings within Hingham such as Ellerton House, Harbor House, also Linden Ponds because we don't have heavy usage from their back, those numbers out. And that's roughly maybe 2,500 out of the 6,000 seniors. And we serve approximately 38% of the population at this point, are coming through the doors, under using transportation, you know, telephone calls, case management, those kinds of things.
And I gather your case management load is growing.
It's growing. This has been a really busy season, particularly for the Shine Councils because it's Medicare de-open enrollment, which closes on Monday, so they've been straight out.
Could you just maybe highlight, and I don't want to spend a ton of time if you don't want to, obviously, on the services you provide to these folks and what you see as additional needs in the future, other than staffing? And you can include facilities, obviously, in terms of needs.
I think one of, if we go back and maybe take a look at the needs assessment that was done a couple of years ago, transportation's going to be a growing need in Hingham. I think right now, we do around 5,000 rides per year one-way and provide services to about 500 people for transportation. But one of the things that was cited within the needs assessment was that people will more and more look towards elder services for transportation. And we do transportation, grocery shopping, medical appointments, the senior center, banks, library, hair appointments. So, it's a wide, wide gambit, and so I think that's always going to be a number-one need. And I think we're going to need to look at that in a different light. People don't schedule everything in the daytime anymore, and I think we're going to have to start really looking at maybe some extended evening hours for transportation and/or some weekend types of transportation. I think the other thing is that there's going to be a greater need for probably additional outreach. We have one full-time outreach coordinator now. The types of cases that we're seeing come in are much more complex. We had a real heavy load of elder abuse reports this past year, hoarding, which Kathy Crowley, the town public health nurse, and Kathy Guanzel work very closely on, and just general overall working with families around caregiving issues and accessing services for their family.
How about helping with financial planning and assistance with housing?
Those are also some of the things Kathy works with. You know, people will come in looking for housing, particularly if they're of limited means. It's hard. People don't want to leave Hingham, yet there are waiting lists for both Baxter Apartments and Lincoln School Apartments, so we try to work with them to encourage them. You really need to kind of look at some of the surrounding communities to link them into, if there's any available open housing. And I think housing in general and the kinds of housing that we have, we're seeing sort of a gap for that middle-income senior that no longer wants to stay in their large home, yet there's not a resource that's sort of a lower, or maybe a $1,200, $1,500 rental sort of rate within the community that they might be able to afford. So, I think housing, just general in the community, is going to be that. And I think a lot of help with, we've started to do job search training, so we've running that program a couple of times a year to help people who want to stay in the employment market but have been out of it to really relook at their resumes, how to apply for a job. Many of the people that have come through the program have never had to apply online, and that's the way you do your job training now. And I think the next biggest issue is caregiver issues for families and providing that kind of support to families to help get through.
One last question. Are you able to find slots for all of the seniors that want the tax work off?
No. Right now, we're probably going to be doing, providing about 45 positions this year. We also don't have the applicants anyway, so it's not going to be, there'll be a surplus in that line item. Ted and I were talking a couple of weeks ago, maybe relooking at some of that, and are there some things that we can do? It won't happen in warrant articles for this town meeting, but maybe looking at some home rule petitions that maybe we can expand that a little bit. We ran into an issue last year, and it applies to all the tax abatement programs. And for this one, if your house is in trust and you're not listed as a beneficiary, you technically aren't eligible for tax work off. So, that's another twist to that in addition to the benefits that had to be taken out in the taxes. So, we've hit a couple of bumps in the road here along the way.
Paul?
My mother-in-law is a beneficiary of the ride program, and I'd like to thank you and your staff for the kindness and the patience that you show in that process. I'd also encourage you to join the planning board tomorrow.
I am.
There's a planning initiative that I think is speaking to the housing needs of the seniors in a contemporary sense, so that's the accessory bylaw proposal that I anticipate seeing at town meeting. But again, thank you for all your good work.
Just a quick question. And the 45 slots, you said they're not all filled?
We have 60. We have about 45 filled.
Oh, you have 60 slots.
But you don't have an extra 15 people that are looking?
Six of the slots are...
Under 60.
Under 60. And so, 54, but are you filling any of the under 60?
We have not had the demand for the under 60 this year either. It's a difficult situation because people have to own their home and have the time during the day to do some of the tax work off jobs.
I mean, we do have, I think one of the things that's happened is we do have the surrogate program where people can work for someone else. A family member can work for their mother, father, aunt, uncle, and reduce that. And I think we have two people that are doing that currently. And I think the other thing that happened this year is we tried a floater method for town halls. We have a couple of people trained that have floated to several departments. Mary's been a real big beneficiary of that during some transition, and I think that's been real helpful for the departments.
And I too want to thank you for the ride program because the many seniors that Tally and I have taken care of and taken to appointments, the people that drive those vans are fabulous, fabulous.
I'd like to mention, if I could, we recently had, Gus Deesman was a volunteer driver. He just retired after 22 years, so I thought that was pretty remarkable that he stayed in that position for 22 years.
Nice. Okay. Anything else? Any questions from the audience for Barbara? Thank you so much for what you do. Awesome. Treasurer Collector, where's his chain?
Next budget is Treasurer Collector in the audience, and I will orientate you to Jean, I could just say, as following Barbara, providing you with a very easy opportunity on the budget, her budget was 378, the budget request was $378,706. I've recommended that amount. There were no additional requests. It's a $2,311 increase year over year and a .61% increase.
Hello. Thank you. Paul?
Hello, thank you, Paul, for inviting us in to present our budgets. This is a level-funded budget. Things are business as usual in the Treasurer Collector's office, so I don't have any request in for new funding this year, and we've been able to maintain our costs. So if you have any questions for me, I'll be happy to try to address them.
Paul?
No, I don't. I would like to thank you, though, for the help that you've been giving our little initiative. We're just about to kick off, so again, Jackie's been great.
She's wonderful.
Really appreciate all that help. Thank you very much.
She's a great artist, too. People don't know that, but she is an incredible...
It's just nice to be involved in something that actually involves a lot of the different departments and town halls. Paul's referring to the flag campaign.
Yes.
And it's nice. It creates even a community, an extended community activity for the employees, so it's been a very positive thing, so thank you for that as well.
Can I get you to talk just for a couple minutes? Because you do amazing work, helping people try and work out plans to pay their taxes. Can you talk a little bit about that, and then about what you're doing with the tax taking?
With payment plans? We do encourage anybody that is having difficulties making their tax payments. This would generally be with your real estate tax. If you run into a period where you suffered a job loss, or you're having financial difficulties, to come in and talk to us and sit down, and we take a look at the options. We will help arrange a payment plan for you. But even more than that, we can sit down and take a look at your situation and really work on a little more in a one-on-one about some of the available options right here within Town Hall, within the assessors department, with various exemptions, with deferral programs, with the tax work off, even with the veterans department. There are people who have benefits that they're entitled to that they don't know about. So it is an opportunity to come in, and we'll see what we can do to help you out. In terms of tax takings, are you interested in more where we're at with them, how we're doing with collections, or on the foreclosure end of it?
The process you do about deciding when to go after a piece of land. You can just give us a brief overview, because I know people at home don't really realize how much work you do, and all of the kinds of different things that you spend your time on.
The tax lien portion of the job is really the, what Irma's referring to is the possible foreclosure action on a person's home. And we have currently about, I think it's, and we run routinely, around 65 properties that we have tax liens on. Generally, we place a tax lien on a property that is delinquent in taxes, it has a year arrears of taxes, and we've been unable to reach the person in order to bring them in to help get on a payment plan and redeem their delinquency. So when that has failed, we do place a lien on the property in order to protect the town's interest. And at that point, it gets expensive, and that is the first step in the foreclosure process. There, we take the parcels and look at them and prioritize them according to, you know, which ones are going to go to land court next. And that's a very long story, but we do...
Just so that people understand, you look at every phase.
We do look at every, we look at every phase. Part of it's done on timing, part of it's done on, you know, generally, you know, we focus mainly on helping the people, you know, if there's a tax lien on a property with a residence, and people are living in it, you know, that's a high priority for us, not on the foreclosure end, but on preventing foreclosure, and in reaching that person and in putting them on payment plans, and helping them to redeem and get out of that situation. And then we have, I would say, probably of the 65 properties, 55 of those are really just parcels that have been left and that are unbuildable, and that we've sort of been, they've been inherited from subdivisions where developers have walked away and left unbuildable pieces of land. And so we take a look at those based on the value of the property, they fall in one category, whether they're a nuisance to neighborhoods, that's another category, and we try to look at all those aspects.
Thank you.
Just a quick question. So if there's an unbuildable law in town, is there a program where, if you do acquire a title, that it's offered to abutters, or depending on the size?
If we foreclose on a parcel through land court, it becomes, it moves from this tax lien portion into the tax possession portion. So any tax foreclosed parcel actually then transfers to the custodianship of the Board of Selectment. So you would become custodians of those parcels. And you then could, yes, auction them off through an RFP process, you could transfer them to another, many of them are conservation properties, so you may decide to transfer them to Conservation Department for their custodianship, and there are aspects, so it's, that's what happens. Sometimes, in the past, the selectmen have done things like land transfers with people. You'd have a tax possession on a lot of land where someone, the abutter is trying to put in a driveway, and they've had backland they don't need, and you've had land they needed for their driveway. I think this happened maybe four or five years ago, and you arranged a land swap with them in order to make that driveway possible for them. So you have the options to look at those parcels and decide what the best use is for them.
So is there any particular programs that are set up, or is it just something that's an option for the town to transfer or an auction of?
There are, you have, like everything else, if you are a custodian of a parcel, you have state laws that you have to abide by. It does have to be an RFP process, an RFP or an auction. You have two options. So you can either go out and put out, you know, get a fair market value through an RFP or an auction.
One of the things we're going to do with the town-owned land list, because I was waiting to get a newer one, Ted was nice enough to give me one, is give it over to the housing trust, to see if there are any parcels that could be used to build an affordable unit of housing on it. Couple towns down on the Cape, and it escapes me which ones have done that, where it's slightly smaller than buildable, but if you do it as an affordable, you can kind of skirt some of the laws, but it is a great way of possibly getting an affordable unit.
Certainly. And with the tax lien list, we always look at that, because even if we, for example, even with our land of low values, we have an option to retain those parcels for the town rather than auction them off to abutters. But generally, those are so low value, they wouldn't probably be a quality for that. But that's a good, that's a good point, and we do try to take a look at them, but there are other people that are more expert in land use than I am, and so they're more than welcome to come down and take a look at them.
We did a pretty rigorous review of this a few years back, where we went through all the properties, and I'm sure you're not surprised, though, that we don't have a lot of these small parcels that no one pays taxes on, that Gene gets that are buildable. Given the land values here in Hingham, people are going to pay the taxes or figure out some way to, if it's a buildable lot. And as Gene said, you know, the goal is not to foreclose on residential or commercial properties. And in fact, if you look at our statistics, are we still at 99% collections roughly per year?
We are at 99% collections.
We don't have a lot of these opportunities, really.
No, and on tax title last year, just, you know, it's not a losing proposition. We collected in fiscal year '14, I think it was around $133,000 in tax title for those accounts, because you're always collecting on your newer ones. The people that are alive and kicking, it's the old ones that you have a problem with. And of that $133,000, I think, in fact, I have the figures here, it's almost 50/50 with interest. I think we collected $62,000 of that was interest, so that's extra revenue to the town. So even the tax title properties, when they do get paid off, those delinquent taxpayers are paying 16% interest on that. So you're getting your money back for giving them the extra time to catch up on their taxes.
More than?
More than.
16%?
Yes.
That's why Gene works really hard with residences and reaches out quickly, so that they don't get into that cycle of 14% and 16% interest. It adds up pretty quickly.
I think it's important that people at home understand how much work you and your team do.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Paul?
I think I've said what I need to say. Thank you so much.
Mr. G?
Sir?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Eileen?
Your next budget is the town clerk's budget, and that appears on page 18. And we'll also be doing the elections budget, which appears on page 20. Pretty straightforward budgets, again. The town clerk's budget, the request is $186,688. It's a $9,796 request over last year, a 5.54%. Elections in the other direction, $26,945, with a reduction of $8,050, and Eileen's decided that there'll be just a couple less elections this year.
Yes, that's the reason why that is less formal, because I will only have two elections in '16, where I had three this year. I will have a third one this year.
I know this is capital, but are you going to get new machines?
Yes. I am, but not this year, in '17. We're going to put it off until '17.
Paul?
I have nothing to add, other than I wish to extend my thanks to you as well, for all the help that you've provided.
No problem. Eileen, how are you? Thank you as well. In '16, you'll have two elections?
In 2000, yeah, in fiscal '16, I will have a presidential primary in a town. '16, the other two will be in '17, fiscal '17.
Got it.
Okay. I have to try to figure that out, too, so I get it.
I'm just thinking normal political cycles and...
Yes, yes.
And then overlaying the fiscal years on top of it?
Right.
Yeah. I don't have any questions. This is a nice one. It's a nice, easy budget.
It is a nice, easy budget.
That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for the work you do, too.
Thank you.
And she's got a great presentation. If you bring school groups in, it's super.
I do. It's fun.
Because I brought several scout groups in, and it's very educational.
All right, your next budget, Veterans' Celebrations in GR Hall, and we have our Veterans' Veteran Services Officer here, Jamie Litchfield, and he has a few people here that have worked and helped him. You want to bring anyone else up with you, or?
John just stepped out, I know he was going to be coming up shortly.
All right. So the Veterans' Services budget, which we'll take up first, is on page 102. And this is a budget that has quite a bit of good news. I'll let Jamie give you the details, but let me give you the overview. The overview is that the Veterans' Services budget request for fiscal '16 is $378,274. I've recommended that full amount, there were no additional requests, and this amount reflects an $88,226 decrease, or an 18.91% decrease. So Jamie, would you like to let the board know why?
Yeah. If we're looking at the major reasons for the decreases, we've seen a 25% reduction in our clients on Chapter 115. We're seeing that because we have veterans that are relocating. We also have clients that are entering the nursing care, nursing homes, nursing homes. We have some that are unfortunately dying. And then also, we're starting to see the benefits of filing VA paperwork for VA benefits, where we're seeing veterans and spouses that are getting pensions and compensations, which puts them above the threshold income, or the income threshold for Chapter 115. But because they're coming off of that, it's because they have more money than what Chapter 115 allows, which is actually kind of a good story on that aspect. With that, too, we're also seeing the returning veterans that are coming back, where they are only on Chapter 115, usually between one and three months, as we help them get set up with their benefits.
That was a wonderful Veterans Forum that you all did in Cohasset. There was so much information there.
Yep. And actually, one of the other things I wanted to touch on, too, is that is just with, like, the OB, the ordinary benefits through Chapter 115, financial assistance, but we also have the medical, where Lisa has worked pretty diligently to get everybody that's not covered by Mass Health onto Blue Cross Blue Shield, and we're seeing, starting to really see the decrease in the medical costs because of all that hard work this year.
Super.
So that's, those are the main reasons why the budget has gone. Our request is lower than it was last year.
John, with all the work you did with the computer systems, is that really paying off?
Well, I would say, what Jamie just alluded to is really good management by Jamie, following in Keith's footsteps, and Lisa Potts, who really does a super job. The work that I did years ago, I think we got the benefit of that years ago. This is really a tribute to what they've done more recently.
What else can we do for you, and for the veterans? What else, what else do you guys need?
To be honest, I'm not really sure with that. I think...
Yeah, I want to be clear, though, that the budget is not, it's going down, but it's not going down because we're providing, you know, we're providing less services to the people that need them. You know, the service levels are going down, as I indicated, because of the cost-saving measures that they're doing in the department, and some of the clients are moving past. But, you know, I challenged them when we went through the budget in the working session to prove to me that this was actually accurate, and that we weren't. And I know, because I looked across the table at a group of four or five veterans that were very clear with me, that there were no reduction in benefits as part of this reduction. So these are just, this is the way it's going for us this year. We've had, you know, if you remember, when I said to you regularly on the advisory committee for the last four or five years, it is what it is. If it's going to go up by 50,000 or 60,000, that's our obligation. I mean, this is the law. Chapter 115 requires us to pay the benefit, the state reimburses us 75% of it. And so these guys do a great job transferring that money to where it belongs, and making sure that it's being done accurately. I would actually say that John's computer system has provided benefits, but it's providing benefits for, you know, some of our surrounding towns, as Jamie and Keith and Lisa have gone into other towns and helped them set up their veterans' operations. And we're in Cohasset now, and we hope to be districting later this year.
I will add one thing, Irma. The Veterans in Need Trust Fund that folks in town have been very generous in contributing to, based on the warrant article that was passed several years ago to establish it, is used to augment the benefits from Chapter 115 for clients that are served by Hingham. For those expenses that are extraordinary, particularly medical and dental expenses, hearing aids and such, which are quite expensive, and where Chapter 115 benefits don't really cover a significant portion of that. And so with the advice of the Veterans Council and support of that, we use those funds to help offset uncovered expenses from Chapter 115.
Super.
I just want to thank you again. I know you've already done that in terms of the discussion, but it's really, it can't be, it should be repeated as many times as we can, what a great job you do, because it's a special group, our veterans, and we can only do so much, but there's so much more we would like to do, obviously. They're a wonderful group. I had the best time, Veterans Day, spending, you could just see the energy in the audience. The town really rises to the occasion when it comes to our veterans, and that's why I think we're asking, what else can we do? Because we appreciate so much what they've done for us and what you guys do for them.
I thought it was amazing, the 15 boxes that were sent to Jabuti. And stuff was coming out of, just every day when I dropped in, there was more stuff.
Yeah, we were running out of room to actually store it.
Yes, that's a good thing.
It is.
Do we know if they got there yet?
As of right now, the last correspondence we had with Keith is that 12 have arrived.
Ooh.
So we've told them more is coming. It's incoming.
Awesome. Paul?
I'd like to likewise extend my thanks to the Veteran Service Officer and Ms. Potts for all the assistance that's been provided. It's been a pleasure to work with your office. Thank you.
And we look forward to continuing to do that. Excellent. That's it? No questions? Okay. Thank you so much. Mary? Oh, no, we've got...
We've got two more budgets that are all tied in together with veterans. The next one is Celebrations. Celebrations appears on page 138 of your budget book. A fairly straightforward budget. $11,063 was the revised budget for '15, $11,210 is the '16 budget, an increase of about $137.
Yeah, can we be clear on what this is for? Because I know every year at advisory, we had to be reminded.
So it's, the Fourth of July funds, the 3750, are for the Police and Fire Department details that are needed. There was a motion at town meeting many years ago by a resident, and we've kept it in ever since. Memorial Day and Veterans Day are the expenses that these folks utilize for the work they do.
And flags, right?
All aspects of those two days.
Yeah, all aspects of the two celebrations.
I think Memorial Day includes plantings and...
And does that cover any overtime, too?
No.
No? Okay, so just Fourth of July?
Yes.
Okay. Any questions on that?
And then the last budget, GR Hall, and we have trustee of GR Hall. Hall, trustees. G.R. Hall, would they like to come on up and join us or am I going to carry you through? The budget appears on page 43. You know, we've been doing quite a bit of work over there.
And it looks great.
Welcome, gentlemen. And the budget is being requested this year. Just give me the totals from last year. I know that Carol Meyer is watching and wants these numbers. The budget for fiscal 15 was $12,589. The budget request for this year was $14,846. It represents a level services budget, increase of $2,257. It is a fairly large percentage increase of 17.93%, but again, we can see it on a very small amount. And most of the increases, well, I'll let the trustee...
Yeah, most of the increase is fuel and electric bills. We're having more usage of the hall. We have Veterans Upward Bound has been meeting over there. That is a higher education. Veterans Upward Bound is through the UMass of Boston, and they had a satellite program on the South Shore, and they meet at the G.R. Hall. So what they do, it's a preparatory, prepares you for a higher education if you want to move on to another, a college. And a lot of these guys have been out of school for a number of years, so it kind of prepares them for moving on. So that's one of the groups that meets there. We have the Hingham Power Squadron that also meets there. The Legion, the VFW, the militia, community meetings, the Veterans Council meets there. So anyway, we're getting a lot more usage of the building, so obviously, they need the heat. We usually turn the heat down to 55 when no one's there and turn it on like an hour or so before the meeting. So that's where the usage is coming from, mostly, like I say, oil and electric.
Thank you. Thank you for taking such good care of it, too.
Thank you. I want to thank you for the capital outlay last year of the paint job and the roof, the roof is coming up and also air conditioning.
The building contains a lot of artifacts, a lot of valuable, invaluable artifacts of, that have accumulated going back as far as the G.R., but stuff that is in there, photographs and memorabilia that we've been working to protect and secure, which is why you see green shades in the windows, is to keep the sunlight out to reduce the ultraviolet degradation of photographs and all. We've had photographs fitted, the air conditioning will help us to keep a more level environment for these things so that, you know, the assets of the history of the town, the people of the town who have served overseas is protected and that the facility is there for the use of the community.
Yeah, this is where Black Mars Swords are, correct?
I believe so.
Excellent. You have some unbelievable artifacts there, and I love all the uniforms.
It continues to grow.
Those uniforms are all donated by Hingham veterans. Those are men and women who have served in the service and families have chosen sometimes after the veteran is deceased, you know, they found this and they have a kinship to it, but they believe it's something that should be shared with the community. So we have uniforms that go back quite far. And I'm proud to say that my dad's uniforms are there, and I know that Scott's dad's uniforms are there. And it keeps, it's nice when you have someone that, you know, explains, you know, we had an Eagle Scout project that facilitated platforms to be able to display and explain what these uniforms wore, what the components of their medals and so forth. And we found, really probably one of the biggest community assets that we've achieved is the History Day with the sophomore high school classes. We have a field trip day where all the history classes get to walk out of school under chaperone with teachers, but they come over with their lunches if it's lunchtime and veterans from different services explain what they did. They're all, for the most part, people that have done service in different parts and different theaters of the service. And the kids get an opportunity to see this and see what the inside of this building is and bring a little bit more community to them.
I know you're both very generous with your time with Boy Scout and Cub Scout units as well, because we hear a lot of good feedback from the kids about what they've seen over there.
In fact, Saturday, Saturday is going to be a VFW ceremony and through the penmanship and Voice of Democracy Awards are being given out on Saturday morning. And that's a program through all the schools at Hingham, public and private schools, to provide that. And then the VFW is very active. So it's, it's a building that at one time was kind of, we almost lost because it was given to a low long-term lease, but was revived. And I think we now understand the intrinsic value of what that building is to the history of the town.
Definitely. Paul?
Gentlemen, thank you for your good work preserving the history and the building and all that it stands for.
Mr. G.
Again, thank you. That tour that I received over the summer was an eye-opener, and you guys do a great job, and thank you very much.
Definitely. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Your next budget, and I believe your last budget of the evening, is Community Planning. It appears on page 23, and your Community Planning Director, Mary Savage-Dunham, is here.
Welcome.
If I can orientate you on this budget. The Community Planning Department requested, or received, actually, let's start there. In fiscal 2015, their budget was $724,863. They requested $103,550 of additional requests this year. I'm sorry, let me start again. The fiscal 2015 budget was $717,64. The request for the Department for Fiscal 16, $724,863. $103,550 was requested for additional items. I am recommending $48,000, which essentially is two 20-hour-a-week positions for an Assistant Conservation Officer and a Building Inspector. For a total recommended budget of $772,863, $55,799 increase year-over-year and a 7.78% increase. I have to say that if, if the funds were available, I would be adding more to this budget, but I think it's just a matter of funding for me. Do you want to give them more detail than I did, just I did the overview?
Sure. Thank you for having me here tonight. I appreciate that. I did prepare some backup material that I'll pass along. Our new funding requests this year are spread across the entire department. And the first one, the request was to fund a full-time local building inspector. The town administrator is recommending funding that as a 20-hour-a-week position. As a way of some background, we currently have a building commissioner who does building inspections. And he also has a number of other duties, but right now, he's spending most of his time out in the field doing these inspections. We also have a 21-hour-a-week inspector, and he's been logging full-time hours due to the demand for inspections. And we also have a part-time as-needed local inspector that's been working approximately 14 hours a week. So the request to add the local is, the full-time local is to really step away from the as-needed services and really have the consistent staffing that will allow the building commissioner to divert some of the time he spends doing inspections, working on some of his other responsibilities, including plan review, annual inspections, and FEMA-related work in-house. And I do have in this backup that I'll pass around, at the back part of that is actually the information on the Building Department for you, identifying the staffing. If you look at this spreadsheet, it tells you who's in the Building Department now and the implications of the funding request. And the Building Department has the local and the building commissioner doing inspection work. They're paid out of the general government budget. We also have plumbing and electrical inspectors. They're paid out of the revolving fund. So this request is really general government-related. The other request that, one of the other requests that we put forward was for a full-time Assistant Conservation Officer/GIS Analyst. And we currently have a 20-hour-a-week position for Assistant Conservation Officer that is not funded or filled. And what we are proposing or requesting was to fill it full-time, and we'd like to broaden the duties to cover Conservation Officer work and some technical GIS-related work. If that position were to be funded full-time, it would handle more of the day-to-day routine regulatory work and customer inquiries at the counter, and it would also provide some additional technical support for the department. We recently purchased a new GIS system, and that's a system that the entire town is benefiting from, although a great deal of the work is happening within the Conservation Section of the Community Planning Department. There's a broad range of people involved in the initiative. I would be remiss from saying that the Assessors Department handles a parcel map. When we talk about GIS, we're talking about some of the other supplemental data layers. If we didn't have the Assessors Map, none of the other data would make sense. So it's a technology that we're trying to broaden our use of to improve customer service and efficiency. We have an electronic submittal policy that we're working to roll out with the help of Roger Fernandes and the Assessors and the IT Department. However, as you move into using more technology, you have to make sure that you have the capacity to handle the background work. Otherwise, it's not efficient, and we certainly want what we initiate to be successful. So the full-time request is to really add additional support for the technology and then also free up our Conservation Agent to work on other projects. Some of the other opportunity costs within the Conservation Department are things such as special projects, grants writing and administration, working on FEMA-related inquiries. You'll see that the Conservation Office held over 220 FEMA meetings with homeowners over the course of 2014. Those are fairly technical conversations for most of us, and so they average about half an hour apiece. If we were to have an Assistant Conservation Officer funded and that position filled, that person could be on the front line to handle some of these inquiries, which would allow the Conservation Officer to focus on land management, volunteer programs, and some other special projects. So that's the thrust of that request. The final new funding request that we had was to add additional services, contract services, to provide some support for essentially recording secretary work. We have a few boards and commissions within the Community Planning Department where the minute-taking responsibilities falls to the department head, and that would be the Historical and Historical District Commissions, as well as the Zoning Board of Appeals. And we also have a number of commissions or committees and study groups that we provide support to. And so, again, it's an opportunity cost, and so that request, which was not supported by the town administrator, so I won't say much more about that, but...
You can just say all you want about it. It's not that I don't support these things. They're great ideas. It's just, you know, the money, you saw the deficit that we're going to be balancing with, so please advocate hard. I prep the selectmen. They know that you're going to advocate very hard for yourself.
We were advised to be thoughtful in our new funding requests and think about what's going on within our respective departments and what would help bolster ongoing initiatives. And so these requests were put forward in that light, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'd like to study what you gave us, and then my questions will come from there. Two questions. How does the Trails Plan project impact all this? That's one. And then can the Conservation Fund that is replenished from CPC every year be used for some of your requests here?
The Trails Plan that's currently being done is being guided by a broad and very capable steering group, as well as a number of professional staff. We're involved in that. So we are working with our GIS system to collect data. The consultants are out there literally GPS-ing the trails and collecting the data, and one of the end results will be an additional layer within our GIS system, an updated inventory of trails. We're looking to identify gaps in the system, potential opportunities for improvements. We're also, when we talk about trails, I want to be clear that we're talking about soup to nuts. It's sidewalks to walking paths in the woods and everything in between. So it may be looking at gaps in the sidewalk system, providing comfortable places for our seniors to walk where they're not feeling like they may trip and fall, finding places for the bicyclists, and trying to avoid conflicts between user groups. The GIS system is going to support that, both in data collection and survey work, as well as ultimately getting the information out, providing the information. It will be on the website, and then it will be maintained in the GIS system. It'll be like a living, breathing, ongoing tool for us, so we're very excited about it. We actually are going to have volunteers out in the field collecting data on tablets, which we'll then upload, which is wonderful. The Green Team is going to be involved in this initiative, the high schoolers, and so it's really pretty exciting. We're having another meeting in a few weeks, and I encourage anybody who's interested to attend. They're all public meetings.
Any thought to what kind of staffing you're going to need to maintain that, or how will the professional staff need to grow, or...
The Trails planning work?
And once it's done, both the planning and once it's done, to maintain it.
Well, we won't be maintaining that. You may see something in the public works arena. Seriously, at this point in time, we're identifying our existing assets. We're identifying opportunities to expand. You may see coming out of this prioritized requests coming towards CPC next year, perhaps for action steps. We're looking for some of the maintenance work, at opportunities to engage volunteer groups, adopt a trail. Some of the work may fall to either contracted services or our DPW team if it's fixing a sidewalk or a trip and fall hazard. I mean, it's going to depend on the magnitude of the work, but I don't anticipate staffing increases within Community Planning as a result of this planning work. This is more to guide the policymakers and you all to decide what of these needs are we going to pursue first. So...
And then can any of the, can any of your needs be met by the Conservation Fund?
We have discussed that, but the Conservation Agent does not feel that that's sustainable. The filing fees really are not as robust as the Revolving Fund for the Building Department, and it probably would not be the most prudent thing to do. We certainly don't want to draw that fund down simply to provide staffing services when there could be other needs. We're not convinced...
We're talking about two different funds. The Conservation Fund is separate from the Wetlands filing fees, which is available for personal expenses. The Conservation Fund is not.
And that's, the fund I'm talking about is replenished by the CPC.
And that is not available for personal expenditures. We don't use it, we've never used it for that.
And the filing fees, we would.
Correct. Filing fees, we have in the past, but it's...
Perhaps you should look at the CPC fund, the COMCOM fund.
I am pretty sure I can...
I don't, I don't know enough about it.
And I'm almost positive that you're not allowed to use it for personal expenditures. But I'll look into that. You have the answer.
Paul?
Mary, I'd like to thank the Department of Community Planning for the hard work that it performs. I'm looking at the numbers, and I can see an upward tick. And I also know that the demands being made upon the Department, the staff assistants, some of these committees that meet at night to perform planning-type work is growing as well. In terms of transcribing the meetings, has there been any conversation about perhaps having a threshold figure on a submittal that would require an applicant to provide a transcriber? Anything in that category?
Fees could be increased. The zoning board could look to that.
We have not looked to that internally yet, but we certainly could investigate options.
That's a good idea.
Well, I mean, I think the little guy would squawk, but I'm talking about, you know, the bigger projects that are going to require multiple meetings and things of that nature where they come in with a team and just having a steno there to take the meeting minutes may be an option to consider. I'd just also like to extend my thanks to Andrea Young for her able assistance on this initiative. It's going swimmingly, so we're all having fun.
Yes, I would echo what Jean Montgomery said, is that that's a great project because so many different departments got to work together, and it's just very rewarding. So, it's nice to be able to step away from your routine work and do that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for all the good work you all do. It's good to watch on TV all the Planning Board, Zoning Board hearings, since we can't get to all the meetings. Paul?
So, a couple of questions. The 20 hours that seem to be in play now for the inspector, would that fund the part-time inspector or full-time, or is that a different person? Or, I thought you said right now you have somebody at 21 hours and somebody at 14 hours part-time.
Okay. So, currently, we have a Deputy Building Inspector position, which is a 21-hour-a-week position. It's technically a part-time position. That person has been very wonderful during our time of need and is coming in, and he's working full-time.
Right.
Although, I think that he would like to go back to his 21 hours a week if we were to resolve that.
Okay. That's what I was asking. I didn't know if you were looking to boost that person up to 40 hours. You want somebody, you want somebody full-time?
The request was to have, in addition to the current 21-hour-a-week person, the request was for a full-time local build, 35-hour-a-week person.
35 hours.
In addition to the two part-times?
No.
The one part-time that we currently have.
One part-time, okay.
I had requested a 35-hour-a-week building inspector. The Town Administrator's recommended a 20-hour-a-week. So, we would have a 21-hour-a-week person, which we have now, and then we would have a 20-hour-a-week position.
And the cost of that additional 14 hours, is there other costs involved to hire somebody that, at that time?
Well, the 14 hours, right now, he's a temporary-as-needed person.
Right. No, I'm saying is, the recommendation was to hire somebody for 20 hours.
Correct.
And I'm basically just doing the math, and maybe I misspoke, I apologize. To get it up to 35 hours, what are the costs involved in that?
35, or 35 hours a week is $48,000, so, give out, what?
Just do the math, the percentage.
$15,000.
Okay. And what about the recording person? It sounds like you folks have a lot of meetings, and I'm assuming the burden falls on somebody in the department to show up to these meetings to keep records, right?
Right. Well, and it depends on what meeting it is and who's there. But yes, we have to, you know, meet open-meeting law requirements, and it varies. You know, we have the Accessory Dwelling Unit Study Group, there's the South Hingham Study Group, we have the Zoning Board of Appeals, and that's a very busy board. And particularly when we have, for the zoning board, cases that may lead towards litigation. And some of those things, or even if it's not going to litigation, very technical cases, a cell tower case perhaps, or a 40B, those cases, the record-keeping is even more important than just, you know, meeting open-meeting law requirements. And having a recording secretary there, you'd have it done efficiently, very quickly, and it would be, you know, ready and available.
We have that at other departments, right?
No.
Not DPW?
No. That was one of the reasons for the rejection.
Oh, no, 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 because I'm picturing somebody that goes to some of the meetings.
Now, we tried that once for the Board of Selectmen. It just didn't work out. And, you know, really, my concern with this line of this request is, you know, the bleed that it would be into, you know, virtually every department has meetings, and someone from the department goes and takes the minutes. And if we started creating recording secretaries, there isn't one department elected or appointed that wouldn't be asking for the exact same thing.
You would need one for advisory and capital guarantee.
Every single, nobody wants to take minutes, really.
Guarantee, for what goes.
Sharon does a great job for the record.
Sharon does. Sharon does a better than great job.
Just for the heck of it, how much was that?
We're in agreement.
So, I know.
The recording secretary, it's not actually a position. We were requesting $7,500 for consultant services. We anticipate that would cover approximately 50 minutes, 50 meeting minutes.
So, would it be the same person, or you would go to one of the services and say, send us?
We would work with David Bazler on how to proceed.
Yeah, the last time we did it, it was the most successful situation was the same person, because it's continuity of the meetings.
Well, also the language and just the learning curve.
So, you know, what happened was the minutes were a transcription of every word that occurred. It just really wasn't an effective process for us.
One other question on the Conservation positions. I thought, did you say currently there's a 20-hour slot that's not funded or not filled?
Correct.
So, that means that there's nobody in that position currently?
Correct.
So, the 20-hour proposal, at least from Town Administrator, would put someone in that position and fund it? Is that where?
Correct.
Okay.
So, you have an authorized position, but you don't have funding for that position?
That's correct.
Okay. Well, I would suggest looking at the CPC Concom Fund to see if some of it could be funded that way. This is great information. Definitely have questions after we have time to read it. Nice job. Any more questions?
Thanks.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Good night. Thank you, Ted.
Good night. Okay. Scary license renewals. Who wants to take us through that?
I can try, or you can probably...
Well...
Why don't I move to renew the following annual Common Victular slash All Alcoholic Common Victular slash Wines and Malt Beverages Retail Packaged Goods Store slash All Alcoholic and Retail Packaged Goods Stores slash Wines and Malt Beverages License as set forth on the December 4, 2014. Two-page...
Proposed vote.
Proposed vote, which will be incorporated into the minutes by reference.
Karen can do a copy-paste. Do, I'm sorry, go ahead. No, no, you second it.
I was going to second it, yes.
Okay. Ted and Betty, are there any of these we need to discuss?
What are you talking about? The licenses?
Yep.
The only thing I want to bring to your attention is the compliance checks. You have a memo in your package on that. They ran through some compliance checks. There were some issues. We will be pursuant to our policies, meeting with the vendors. Generally, it's, in the past, what we've done is the Police Chief, the Town Administrator, and the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen meet with the violator the first time, have a discussion, and hope that we never have that discussion again. And the Chief usually runs the meeting and makes it pretty clear. And then, the next time we have that discussion, if we have it, it's here, in front of you folks. It's usually not, we haven't had too many of those, thankfully. They're not very pleasant.
Well, it looks like we only have...
And it was very, very minor...
One, two?
Issues. And so, Mike Perino is trying to set up some dates for us to come in and have those discussions.
Will they be here, or you all will go discuss?
We usually do it in our office.
Okay, I don't know, here meaning...
Here, yeah. Yeah, we'll have it here in the Town Hall. We make them come to us.
But they don't, they won't be coming in front of the Board of Selectmen?
No, they, we usually don't do it for the first offense. We do it for the second.
So, quick, okay. Thanks, Paul. I know from Mansfield's 22 November memo to the Selectmen that there are one, two, five establishments that aren't in compliance with their current managers. Is that, is that an issue that we should be linking towards renewal, or is that something that they can cure by coming in and updating?
They will be coming in for you to update within the next month or so. They can't do this during the actual renewal at ADCC.
Okay. That'd be my only question.
But this was an opportunity to pick up those anomalies.
That's interesting, because one of them was in here with a change of managers recently.
Right.
Okay. Okay, good. So, they're really the group that we just have a motion on the table for. There's nothing extraordinary except what you...
Correct.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Great. Now, the next group. How can we do the, I guess, can we group them to just do Group One Sellers Agent Licenses?
I mean, I think you could do Common Vic licenses.
We already did this.
Okay, so then, just keep going through in groups, right? As printed in your agenda?
So, the Group One Seller Agents, do you want to take that as a, without reading all the names?
Sure. A vote that we renew the Class One Sellers Agent Licenses of those entities which appear on the December 4, 2014 vote list, as stated in the memo. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye. A vote that we renew the Class Two License of the identities identified in the December 4, 2004, as listed in the memo. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
A move that we renew the annual weekday entertainment license of Kay's Harbor Corporation DBA Stars on Hingham Harbor, consisting of one or two guitar bass players for two nights per week from 7:00 p.m. to midnight, excluding Sundays. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
A move that we renew the annual weekday entertainment license of Eat Well Inc. DBA Toscic, consisting of one or two guitar bass players for two to three nights per week, excluding Sundays, from 8:00 p.m. to midnight. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
A move that we renew the annual weekday entertainment license of Asian Fusion Inc. DBA Gourmet Garden, consisting of small combos of any combination of vocals, keyboard, and guitar for Thursday, Friday, and Saturday from 8:00 p.m. to midnight. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
A move that we renew the annual weekday entertainment license for B E N E Inc. DBA The Snug, consisting of a solo artist or a trio playing Irish music from 8:00 p.m. to midnight. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
A move that we renew the annual weekend entertainment license for Haifong Inc. DBA Zendo Asian Bistro and Lounge, consisting of a band, DJ, and karaoke, indoors only, Friday and Saturday from 9:30 p.m. to midnight.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
A move that we renew the annual weekday entertainment license of Weber Development LLC DBA Scarlet Oak Tavern, consisting of live bands of no more than five people playing contemporary music on one, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday from 6:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m. on the outside patio, and two, seven days per week from 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. in the indoor meeting rooms. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
A move to renew the annual weekday entertainment license of Vista Verde Corp. DBA Rafael's at Sasha Country Club for a piano bar on Fridays and Saturdays from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., and for its monthly indoor/outdoor concert series. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
A move to renew the annual weekday entertainment license of Legal Seafoods LLC DBA Legal Sea Bar for five to seven large-screen televisions, seven days per week, from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 a.m. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
A move to renew the annual automatic amusement device license of Lima Sports DBA South Shore Sports Center 55 Recreation Park Drive. This license is restricted to the seven games as follows. One, Prize Time. Two, Fast and Furious. One, Cruising World. One, Tekken Tag. One, Cruising Exotica. And one, Whodunit. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
A move to renew the annual weekday entertainment license of Gamma Three Group DBA Union Fish Seafood and Raw Bar for a solo acoustic artist on Thursdays from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., and for two small, flat television screens, seven days per week, from 11:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
A move to approve the change of operating hours of Manaba Inc. DBA Main Street Market and Deli 484 Main Street from 10:00 a.m.
To 10:00.
To 10:00 a.m. on Sundays. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye.
A move to approve the application for a Common Victular license of White's Pastry Shop Inc., 400 Lincoln Street, Nancy Sherber manager. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Now, slow down for a minute, Ted. You want to tell, you're on a roll. I didn't know if I could stop him.
Come on, we want to get this done.
You want to say anything about this one, Ted?
The electrical fees are part of the work at the School Department. We historically don't bill permit fees to people who do work on our own buildings, because then they just bill us back.
A move to waive the electrical permit fees for Evermore Electric, who will be upgrading electrical and replacing like fixtures at school properties. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
A move to appoint Rickard Johnson to the Bear Cove Park Committee for a three-year term, expiring June 30, 2017. Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
A move to approve the issuance of a special one-day all-alcoholic beverages license to Lavishly Dunn Catering Care of Jonathan Dunn for the Hingham Mothers Club Festival of Trees charity event to be held at the Hingham Community Center on December 6, 2014, from 7:30 p.m. to 11:30 p.m. Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? You doing an aye? Did you?
No, I'm, yeah.
I didn't know if you ran out of ayes.
Just taking a breath. Can I suggest we invite Mr. Harris to come to the next meeting?
He's not on the committee.
No, but he's interesting.
No. I want to get this committee going. He'll get the charge as soon as we. We've been reluctant to put together a charge, and we need to get the, I'm sure we're going to hear from Carl. So, I'd like to go ahead and get this going.
Okay. Paul, let you do this one. I promise I'll second it.
A move to accept the charge of the Plymouth County Study Group.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? And this will go out to Jane Malmi tomorrow morning. The only other thing we have that did not make the agenda, but I guess we need a vote on using counsel to vet or respond to two questions involving the Bathing Beach. And I have a statement from Amy McQuiggin, who was hoping to be here, but she was hoping to be here by 9:30, so she hasn't, and we're not going to hang around waiting for. So, there were, I'll give a little bit of background, and then I do have a statement from Amy that she wanted read. I was approached by several people to get a legal opinion for two questions concerning the Bathing Beach. And it involves the Bathing Beach deed, but also the Acts of 1934. And you all have the documents and the two questions. And it's a group of, there are more people out there than just one. Amy's got a long history with the Bathing Beach, but Amy's not the one that came to me to ask. And I'll, let me read the two question, well, it gets, let me read the two questions. The first question is concerning the Acts of 1934, which established the trustees of the Bathing Beach. States that the inhabitants of the town of Hingham elect for indeterminate tenure a board of three trustees. And since we elect for life, or until a person no longer wants to be a trustee, is that not determinate in a violation of the Act? And this is the only committee or group that we have that kind of serves for life, or until they get tired of doing it. I'm not saying that's a bad thing, because Peter Fee, who is a dear friend of mine, served for what seemed like forever, until his health no longer allowed him to... like forever, until his health no longer allowed him to do it. But he was a sweetheart. He's since passed on. We've got Joni Williams, who's been there forever. So we do have that, but people, like on the REIT Commission, they're, they're reluctant to commit to a significant amount of time, and the REIT Commission's a five-year. So just the question of what, what does that statement mean? And then the second one is a question on the, in the deed that gave the land to the town, and we're not going to read the deed, because it's multiple pages. The Act also states the Bathing Beach is for the benefit of the inhabitants of said town, and the deed is very specific in saying the same thing. So this is almost like trying to clarify and get a price for the water company. You're using words from 18-something, and the deed comes from, I can't remember what year, but it's, it's back then. Getting clarification of that. We're doing an awful lot of development at the harbor involving the Bathing Beach. We've got a great RFP out there now to put a snack shop. That, I think it's better now to get the answers to that than go down the road and not. And I'll, I'll open it up to questions, but I also then, Amy asked that this statement be read, which you all received today.
I mean, can we just accept it as the correspondence, or?
No, I, I would like to get Town Council opinion on this. Paul?
I thought you meant just accept that.
Oh, the...
The thing from Amy, just accept it?
Yes.
Actually, she asked that this be read, if she couldn't be here. I'll do it quickly. Dear Chairman Lotter, Selectmen Gannon and Healy, and Town Administrator Mr. Alexiades, I hope to be able to attend tonight's BOS meeting if I return in time from Boston. I understand that matters pertaining to the Hingham Bathing Beach are to be addressed. In the event that I do not make it back in time for the meeting, I respectfully request that my questions be offered into the record. And here's her statement. Despite numerous requests by me to have the Bathing Beach deed of trust, whose essence is one straightforward page legally interpreted by Town Council, and despite a follow-up request by the Board of Selectmen, who I am told are a town body authorized to make requests of Town's Council, the request to interpret the deed and determine what Mr. Cornish, who gave the beach property to the town in 1916, intended by his very specific phrases inhabitants and people of Hingham, has met with silence and inaction. My questions are simply, why has the BOS request been stifled, and by whom? How much longer can the concerns of taxpayers be thwarted? Will we have a legal interpretation of the deed so that on going forward, with the plan to rehabilitate our waterfront, we will know definitively who can and cannot use the Bathing Beach, and to what uses it can and cannot be put? What are you hiding by consistently ignoring this issue? Thank you for your consideration. Very respectfully yours, Amy Worf McQuiggin. Now, I, I'm not aware of any previous requests. I acted on the one that I was given, and it did not come from Amy. So I sent the request to Susan. I sent it to Ted. I know how busy he is. And then I sent it on to Susan, but Susan says she can't act on it until Ted tells her to. So I'm looking to you two, do, do we take a vote to ask Susan to do this? Because I think we should. And I'm not aware, Ted, are you aware of other requests to, to look into this?
Nope.
Oh, okay. Then I guess we'll find out from Amy, what she means. We're certainly not hiding anything.
Not whatsoever. I can tell you that I spoke with the Chairman of the Trustees of the Bathing Beach. He indicated to me that after Ms. McQuiggin wrote her letter to the editor that was published about this issue, that they invited her to a meeting, and are waiting to see if she'll come. She didn't come to that meeting, and hasn't subsequently. They're waiting to engage her in this dialogue.
Well, I think perhaps if we get the response from our Town Council, that will be most helpful in the dialogue. So I'd look to ask you two for a vote to...
I want to discuss it.
Well, discuss.
Okay. You know, the Bathing Beach trustees, I've known Peter Fee. I think Joan Williams probably taught me how to swim when I was a little kid. You know, they're, they're very protective of the beach.
Yes, they are.
As you can probably agree.
And some of us are also.
Right. But they're elected at town meeting to be the stewards of the Hingham Bathing Beach. And I think that, one, to be taking action of this nature without giving the trustees an opportunity to, like, sit here and, and speak to this issue, or even engaging in this issue without, you know, Ms. McQuiggin going through what I think is the appropriate process of going to the trustees of the Bathing Beach and saying, you know, hey, this is, this is how I look at it, seeing what they have to say. And if they think that this is a matter of importance that should be kicked into a legal opinion, that's going to cost a lot of money, then perhaps that's the better approach to take. Would I be nervous about here, to be honest with you? I mean, just, let's transplant the illustration to a different board. What, what if somebody wrote to us and said they were concerned about what the planning board was doing, because it failed to act on something they wanted acted on? So we say, all right, Susan Murphy, go, go investigate that. That, you know, that's the planning board jurisdiction. I think this is a jurisdictional issue. And while I'm not quarreling with the, the inquiry so much, it's the process that has got me nervous. Because I don't want people to start leapfrogging to the Board of Selectmen to get legal opinions on stuff that other boards have jurisdiction and control over, simply because they're not happy with the situation. I reached out to Alan Perrott myself, and, you know, I can confirm what Ted said. I reached out to Amy. She, I'm the guy that she's referencing in the letter that she sent. I thought with the letters that she wrote in the Journal this summer, with an opening on the Harbor Development Committee, she might be a, a good fit for that. Now, I'm not going to reveal the contents of the discussion, but suffice to say, I didn't put her name up. But I don't see why she, and I, I went to school with Amy. Amy, if you're watching, how you doing? I'd ask that you go to the, the Bathing Beach trustees, ask your questions of them, and if you're not satisfied at that point, then, you know, I guess here we are. But I just think we, we've got to show respect for the committees that have the responsibilities for the jurisdictional oversight that they have. Bathing Beach trustees are responsible for the Bathing Beach. If she doesn't like how it's run, or she thinks it should be run differently, I, I think she should be going there first. I really do.
I think she, and it's not only Amy. There are several other people involved.
And they should step up and go to these meetings. These people aren't going to bite their heads off.
None of the trustees are lawyers, and this is a request for legal opinion. And I got a request from two other citizens for a legal opinion on this.
Yeah, but here's the thing.
But what's, what's the harm, what's the harm in doing this?
Well, I mean, I think that in some ways, it's already kind of been done, just by virtue of the activities that go on down there. You know, there would, there's been permitting of the farmer's market down there.
Mm-hmm.
You know, I, I know we, we did some zoning changes with respect to the kind of uses that could go on down there. And that would have popped. Our, our real estate council's way too sharp to let something like that.
Then this shouldn't cost any money to do.
Maybe. I don't know. You know, it's difficult to predict.
If all that you say is true, that this probably is already researched, then this should be very...
I didn't say it was. I'm assuming it is.
Okay.
I'm assuming it is.
Let's assume it is. Then this should be a simple...
I can clarify that for you. It's not, it's not research. Susan gave me an estimate of about a day's work.
Well, that's nothing, really. That's, and I think this is going to continue to come up until we get a legal opinion on it. So...
Let me, let me just, because I talked to Ted, well, I think we emailed each other. We weren't talking, but, but it felt like we were talking about, and I was trying to say, what's the downside of this? And I didn't know the one-day cost, which, in all honesty, I know my lawyers. And to me, I'm looking well beyond the current world of Hingham and the waterfront. A lot of things are going to happen down there in the next 20 years, at least, if, if, if half of what I hear is, is on the horizon, at least to be proposed, not necessarily done. It seems to me a no-brainer to, to just find out what the legalese is here. The trustees, I, I would agree. Trustees are not lawyers. They're going to listen to her. They're going to have a conversation. And because they're not lawyers, that information or that decision or opinion is not going to be brought forth, and we'll be back doing this again. Let me just finish. And the only thing I'll say is, I'm trying to look for a downside of this, and I don't see, and again, that's why even with Ted, I said, I'll, I'll come here and listen tonight, because, you know, I, I always like to listen to you, Paul, and...
I appreciate that, Paul.
And, because, because I, I learn, you know? And you've been in town a long time, and you know a lot of, a lot of things that I don't. So the bottom line is, though, I don't see a downside to it. I don't think people are going to be coming to the Board of Selectmen to ask for legal opinions on all kinds of things, like your example, the planning board. But in this case, if it's a one-day, you know, and she may, I, here's my thinking. I'm not saying she did. She may already have an opinion based on some of the other legal work she's done, and maybe it's really simple, and we get the answer. So I don't think this is a bigger, big problem. I know Ted and I talked about it, and I, I understand the jurisdictional issue, but we do have activities, we're permitting activities. Unless somebody can tell me what the downside is beyond what I've heard, I would be happy to make a motion to get it done. And you know what? We would find out what the answer is, and I don't think it's going to be that big of a deal.
You know, we went to a special town meeting because of a complaint that there wasn't respect for process. I mean, the, the process has value here. And what I'm saying is that if, if you're not satisfied with going through the process, then there's a recourse. But I don't think you should be jumping right to the recourse right out of the gate without going through the process.
Let me give you a little, my view on it, because I appreciate, well, I appreciate your viewpoint on it, because you, you come at it from a different viewpoint, from a planning background. But I don't see downside in this either. And I think getting a legal opinion will help the conversation that will occur between Amy, we've got, I believe it's a Mike Walker, and the two people that came to me, that would like to go to the trustees and have a conversation about, how do we do better at the Bathing Beach? Do we've got some ideas? But I think this will help facilitate that conversation, rather than have it revolve around these two questions and miss the bigger issue about how do we make the Bathing Beach and the whole environment around there a better place for all of us, and especially get rid of the geese.
Well, I think the geese are different, that's a different issue.
It's part of it, because that was, if you read the email that was sent to us by...
I did.
Okay, another person.
Yeah, no, I did. And I also went to the meetings last year when that whole issue was being discussed, and...
Did you like the goose-nator?
Well, I like the idea of a measured response, and trying to ramp it up with a minimal cost, so that, you know, if, if the cheap rule can work, good. We don't have to, you know, shell out extra dough. I like that. I like that discussion. I like that debate, that deliberation. I, I would like to, I just think that the trustees are charged with running that beach, and I think they do a pretty good job. And I think that they put in some really good effort. I, I see some, some good faith, truly sincere people that really care about the place.
They're wonderful.
Why don't we give them the respect of saying to somebody who's not happy about the situation, go see them first and see if you can work it out?
But they're not lawyers. And the question on the table is two questions that require Town Council of some sort to opine on it, and put them to bed once and for all.
Well, I mean, you know, the, the letter that we got, which was not read into the record, but which is now part of the public correspondence, you know, is, is kind of...
I think I have it.
...suggesting that, you know, that because there's an RFP that's been issued, and it's limited, you know, if it's, you know, turns out that it's just limited to Hingham residents, is that going to be something that, you know, was a negative? You know, I mean, there's just more here that's going on. And I just think that it, it's healthier, and it legitimizes the efforts and confirms our confidence in these boards, that, that we're just not going to, you know, have a Pavlovian response to dig out the lawyers just because somebody wants us to.
I don't think this is Pavlovian response at all. I think these questions have merit.
These people were all elected at town meeting to serve as trustees for life. I mean, we're here for three years.
Can I, can I just, and I have the utmost respect for the trustees, by the way. So it's not, it's not like, it's not as if that I'm questioning that, but, but I think, to be honest with you, Paul, I mean, from a lawyer's perspective, I think, sitting here in 2014, it seems silly to me that we don't have, as a town, legally know the answers to those questions. We should get those answers. The impression I'm getting is that we can be provided to us fairly quickly. And, and so, so again, what is the downside? I know you talk about the process, but I'm talking about looking forward. Everybody should have that kind of information, because it's, it's powerful, because it, it allows us to plan, and allow us to, to look to whatever we do on the waterfront. To sit here, and again, I know, I know you're not saying this, but to sit here and, and not have the answers when they're literally at our fingertips, and, and pass it off to the trustees, who don't have the resources to do it themselves, when we, I think, this is my opinion, we should know the answers to these questions. Why wouldn't we spend a day to find out?
I agree.
Does that make sense?
I agree.
Because I don't know whether it'll take a day. And frankly, I, I just go back to, you know, to me, the, this town runs on volunteers. We're volunteers. I mean, yeah, we get paid a little bit, but for the work that's involved. Come on. But, you know, the, the volunteers that staff these committees have got to know and believe that we have their back, and we are supporting them. And we should be able to say to someone, have you gone to that committee that has the responsibility for that particular area of concern that you're speaking to us about? And if the answer to that is no, then we should very respectfully and politely say, why don't you go there first? Why don't you see what, you know, maybe there's a layman's explanation for what they're doing there that might serve to satisfy the, the complaint that's being raised? I don't know, but...
This is not a complaint. This is, these are two questions. There are other issues that the four people that I'm aware of want to discuss, but this, these are legal issues, are legal questions on the table. And again, none of the trustees are lawyers. And I think this gives the answers to this, gives them one more tool in their bag to deal with other issues.
Or it escalates the argument, because if the answer they get is not one they're happy with, then, you know, we're, we're dealing with that.
Shouldn't we know, shouldn't we know that now?
We're dealing with the fact that presumably we've offended the people that are charged with...
I, I talked to Alan also about this. We would probably be going forward, because we now had not only Amy, there were three or four other people that were looking.
I remember Alan sitting right around there, and, you know, I sat on a board with Alan.
He's fabulous. They're all fabulous.
He is, and he's very reasonable.
I don't think...
And that's why I don't understand why this conversation can't be had with him.
And you've had a 10-minute conversation about the trustees of the Bathing Beach on an item that wasn't on your agenda.
I understand. But I asked you to put it on the agenda, and they knew we were going to discuss it tonight.
No, you didn't ask me to put it on the agenda.
I did.
Otherwise, I would have put it on the agenda, and it would have been yesterday.
I'll resend you the email.
So...
I'll resend the, oh, here. Wait a minute.
So, the point, though, I'm just trying, I'm, I'm concerned about the organizational infrastructure of the town. And I, that, that to me is very important. I don't want people turning away and saying, you know, this is too much of a hassle. You know, I, I think that, you know, if, if we respect the committees that we appoint and that we work with, and ultimately something may reach us...
I will resend the email. I do...
Maybe it will get to us, but go to that committee first. That's all I'm saying.
But I think we're going to waste a lot of time, and it's going to come right back here.
Paul, I mean, two things, and I, and this is the last I'll say, is, I don't think, I don't think the trustees can answer the questions that are being asked, number one. That, so that's a problem right there. Number two is, we also have an obligation to the people in the town that have concerns about a number of issues we got on the Bathing Beach, but we've been only asked to address two of them. I assume that we get the answers to those two, which we may already have, Susan may already know the answers to those. And they go to the meeting like you want them to do, and they talk about the issues, and hopefully they resolve it, and we don't have to be injected into it. But it seems like two different issues, the legal answer and the process slash committee answer.
Well, let me spin it out a little bit further, just if, if I just might finish, and I'll try to be brief.
Yeah.
A citizen made a, made... A citizen made a, made a, made a claim that the title to the old ship church, you know, it was called into question and was raising that as an issue. And, for reasons that are beyond me at this point, Town Council was tasked with, you know, researching the issue and spent, you know, a fair amount of time. And for what? I mean, we've got, we've got people, you know, that don't reside in the town, passing through the beach periodically. Restricting it to Hingham residents only has collateral consequences that frankly, from a public relations perspective, aren't exactly thrilling. You know, "You can go through my town, but don't stop." I don't know if that's a message I'm signing onto either, you know?
I thought that was the story when I was a young kid driving through town. I saw the sign. I never felt like I could go to that beach.
Well, when we first moved up here...
Well, there you come, my man.
There was a sign, "Hingham residents only".
Yeah, no, I still moved here.
Good for you. I'm glad you came.
So did we.
You're up in South Hingham.
Yeah, come on, now, do we need a visa to come up to your part of town? Maybe a passport or something?
I'll let the gate up.
Yeah. And we'll sneak under it or go over the...
Well, you know, I, like Amy, have a lot of respect for her, but I disagree with the approach that's being taken here. I mean, I know where you're going on this, but I think you're sending a message to the other Town Boards that, you probably don't intend to send it, but...
We are not sending a message.
It's the takeaway. It's the takeaway here.
Paul, we're not.
If somebody can leapfrog their jurisdiction, their authority, and come into us because they're not happy with something that's going on...
And I disagree with that.
Okay. All right. We'll agree, disagree agreeably, I guess.
Yeah. Do you want to make a motion?
So, do we have a motion to...
To...
Ask legal counsel for the Town...
Town Council.
Town Council. We got a real estate mad over there.
This would be a real estate council on this one.
Okay, real estate council to...
To ask...
To act upon the email that was sent to her on November 26th.
By who?
I sent it to her.
To act upon an email sent by Chairman Lauder to Susan Murphy on...
And it was originally sent to, well, actually, it was sent to her November 26th. Originally sent to Ted on October 27th with two questions involving the Bathing Beach.
So, I just want to make sure I have the right questions.
Okay. The first question here.
First question concerning the Acts of 1934. It states, "The inhabitants of the town of Hingham elect indeterminate tenure a board of three trustees, and since we elect for life or until a person no longer wants to be a trustee. Is that not determinate in a violation of the Act? The Act also states that the Bathing Beach is for the benefit of the inhabitants of the said town, and the deed is very specific on page 2, to hold, manage, and improve the same with the powers and subject restrictions hereafter set forth as a park, bathing beach, or playground for the benefit of the people of Hingham until said Hingham Village Improvement Society Incorporated shall dissolve, whereupon the same shall be conveyed. The three trustees to be chosen by the inhabitants of the town of Hingham to have and to hold the same to the said trustees, their successors, and assigns forever in trust. Nevertheless, to hold, manage, and improve the same, subject to restrictions hereafter set forth, is a park, bathing beach, or playground for the benefit of the inhabitants of the town of Hingham. Does this paragraph, any other wording in the deed, say that the Bathing Beach is only for the use of the residents of Hingham?"
Okay. You going to second it?
Yeah.
Okay. I second.
I'm going to have some discussion.
Any further discussion?
I am extremely careful before I pick up the phone and call any of the Town Lawyers that the people's money pays for. I run it by the Town Administrator and say, "Is this an appropriate thing for me to inquire on?" I'm very, very careful about that. I think that we owe it to the people that have put us in these chairs to, you know, spend their money wisely, have a practice that we, you know, stick to. Just can't be picking up the phone every time we want to chat with, you know, the lawyer. Although, it seems like, you know, that probably happens more than I'd like. But, you know, when I saw that, I got very, very concerned. Because I would rather that happen after we have a discussion like this. I mean, it's only fair, right? Yes?
I understand.
I mean, no, but, but do you agree?
I understand.
But do you agree?
I understand.
Because, yeah, I don't know what that means.
I understand your point of view.
But don't you agree that this should be a uniform decision? Or at least a majority one? Before we start, you know, lawyering up on issues?
I understand. I think each case is different.
Well, let me tell you, from my perspective, Paul, is, since I've been here a very short time, I've found that, for different reasons, that I've been on the phone with Labor Council and today I put a call into Town Council on issues that we need answers for. And I usually do talk to Ted about the issues first. And it's not being disrespectful to Ted at all. It's just at some point, once I have the conversation with Ted, and he may have an opinion, he may not, I like to get something in writing from the Council. So, in a sense, I'm already doing that. And it's, no one's ever questioned it before, to me, since I've been doing it in a number of issues. So, I don't think it's as big a deal as you might think it might be. But, if it was, if we were undertaking litigation such as Aquarian, where we were going to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars, I think there'd be a whole host of discussions. We're talking about two questions to get answered, which may take one day. You know, and that happens every day, almost, you know, as far as I can see.
She has his nose under the tent, guy.
No, I don't think so.
Whatever you say, but...
But you start small and if you get used to doing it, it grows. And before you, I mean, what if, what if I lawyer up and want some kind of legal opinion that's contrary to what you want to do? But I don't even bother telling you, I just do it. No, but that's not right.
Ted was aware, I think what Paul was saying, I'll just reiterate it, is that...
I just got a question. I mean, so you can't vote on anything that's not on the agenda.
Oh.
So, you can only discuss it.
Okay.
It has to be taken up in another week.
Okay, we'll take it up in another week.
Thank you very much, Adam Town Clerk.
Thank you. Okay, tell her thank you. We'll vote on this next Thursday.
Okay.
Super.
All right, well, we had a discussion.
Yep, we had a discussion.
And we want to follow them.
We'll get some input. Maybe Amy can meet with the Bathing Beach Trustees.
In the meantime.
Yeah.
That would be great.
Well, it's not only Amy, there's a number of other people.
Well, they can come too.
We've got...
When are they meeting? Do we know?
I don't know.
I just figured if it was...
Okay.
Sooner than later.
Okay, how about Town Administrator reports and Selectmen reports?
You know, I've been busy with the budget in the holiday season, so I don't have anything other to report to you than I've told you.
Paul?
It's 10:25. I'm going to pass.
Paul Gannon? I have a few.
Do the same. You guys?
Okay, yeah, I've got a couple of things. Christmas in the Square starts tomorrow night. Santa shows up around 6:30. And the schedule is on the website. It's a weekend-long event. And it is in support of all of our downtown merchants. So, please support the merchants. Come on down tomorrow night and have some fun. The Hingham Food Pantry provided Thanksgiving meals to 170 families, which I find troubling, but glad they could do it. We want to thank them for their efforts. And they are grateful for the community support that makes it possible. If you would like to help, since we have holidays coming up of a variety of kind during December, money is always good. But if you want to help in any other way, please call the Food Pantry at 781-740-8181. HKM, Hingham Community Access and Media, is looking for your feedback. There's a survey on the Town Website. Please take a few minutes to take it. They do some really, really great work. And they're just getting stronger and stronger. They've hired a full-time coordinator to work with the educational channel. So, I'm really excited about the possibilities that are going to be happening in that area. On December 15th, and I'll mention this again next week, at Panera Bread on Derby Street Shops, there's going to be a fundraiser for SNAP, the Special Needs Athletic Partnership. So, a portion of the receipts from that day will be donated and allow SNAP to provide more programs for our sped kids. And the last item is, watch on HKM Channel 97 for Comcast. I did a segment on the issues with Chief Pireno and talked about, and he's got pictures. And it's really, really something. Yeah, your name was mentioned.
Uh-oh.
It's got pictures. I will say no more. And we did edit out a portion.
Oh, that's good. May I, Paul?
We've got pictures of Mike when he was very young. And all of us ladies are going to line up and get copies of these, providing Linda Lutzus. But Mike talks about his career and how he started and how policing has changed. He brought about a half a dozen pictures, but it really, really was a great segment to do. And I think you'll get a very good feel of the legacy this man is leaving as he retires. It was, is the best one I've done so far, just in terms of the people interaction. But he really loves this town and he loves what he does.
So, can I just, one thing I forgot.
Yeah, go ahead.